The closed session agenda. The city council opened the closed session meeting and it is currently, the closed session agenda is currently in recess while you continue with your open session items. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm calling to the beginning of the successor agency meeting. Could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Here.
And Mayor Donahue?
Here. Public comment for consent agenda and items not on this successor agency agenda. Okay, seeing none. Do we have any ex parte communications concerning this successor agency?
Nope.
Seeing none?
Move the consent.
Second.
Okay, I think I heard moved by Vice Mayor Bowder, seconded by Councilmember Medina. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
No action items? That adjourns this meeting. Onto the regular city council meeting. Are we ready to do our oath? And our song?
Mr. Mayor, I see a mandolin in the room.
Okay, I suggest we stand up and do our oath. We have our oath available.
Can we sit to do it because it's not on our thing? We just turn the screens on?
Yeah.
We really got to memorize this.
I've got my screen here.
Yeah, you just got to turn your screen on. Okay, we're good.
There we go.
Are we standing or sitting?
We're standing for the oath.
I?
Aye. Diane Martinez solemnly pledge that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California as I discharge my duties as a city council member for the city of Emeryville. Our starting note. Everybody sing along if you want. One, two, three. This land is your land. This land is my land. From California to the New York island. From the redwood forest to the Gulfstream waters. This land was made for you and me.
Do we need to do a roll call?
No, no need for a roll call since we just did one. But you will want to call for, to move approval of the final agenda?
Are there any changes that we need to do in this agenda? Okay.
Moves to approve?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Medina, seconded by Councilmember Pats. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Okay, that moves us to special orders of the day. And this is now for me to do the state of our city address. Yes, we could use a slide here. Our city, it used to look like on the screen on the left there, that is old industrial Emeryville. That's looking, I believe, towards San Pablo. I believe this building right there is black and white liquors. And that rail yard is actually the East Bay Bridge Mall now, and you can see the freeway there. This is sort of the tail end of the industrial era. Okay, on the right here, we have our city more like today, seen from the south. You can see the mud flats. Well, things have definitely changed, and I just want to say that our city didn't start out in either of those pictures. Our city started with those of us who were here at the time, living right on the edge of the bay. We made our living, living in what looked like tents on the edge of the bay. And we made our living by harvesting shellfish and we reached a trade agreement with people in the hills. The people in the hills did not want us going up there. Today, they're a little more tolerant of us going up there. But at that time, it's like we were only allowed up there during acorn season, and we were allowed to gather acorns. But we were not allowed to hunt up there because the people in the hills controlled hunting. However, our world included the whole shoreline of the bay. We had relations, actual and extended family, all around the edge of the bay. These are people, the Emeryville people, eventually actually moved to what is now downtown Oakland and vacated the Emeryville Shellbound area that was dug up during this industrial period. And I arrived at this city a long time ago. I'm the oldest person on the council, and I'm going to walk over here and show you some things that I made at the industrial period of our city. And this, while we were primarily spewing all kinds of pollution and things were being made in Emeryville, I was making these sculptures right here in my studio at 142045th Street. And it was a different era. The police chief came into my studio in a leather jacket with Mayor Wally Fox and Councilmember Jim Golden. And, you know, it was just unannounced. This happened. And it was, you know, this gruff guy in the leather jacket. "I understand you have something to do with the tenants' union here. Meet my mayor, Wally Fox. Meet my mayor, Councilmember Jim Golden. Do we have your support?" So I asked him, "What are your plans for Emeryville?" And then Mr. Fox said, "We're going to make it better." And then they leave and walk out. And what happened was, I got a call later that night from the chairwoman of the California Democratic Party. And she wanted me to know that if we weren't seen directly supporting these council members, that our community could lose our occupancy agreement. That is hardball politics. This was a pretty overtly corrupt city at that time. And I'm pleased to report that corruption is down in our city. It's much lower. It's really definitely not a corrupt city anymore. We've got a new era happening here. And we have diversified our economy. Things are definitely different. You can see that the industry that was here has been replaced by just all kinds of things. Retail, biotech, all kinds of startups are happening. And our population, when I first came here, was just a little under 2,000 people. Now, we're hovering at around 12,000 people. That's a pretty major expansion. And all of this was achieved in what is historically relatively short order, partly by redevelopment law, which allowed all of the money that would normally be split up between the state, the county, and the city to go directly into our city's redevelopment fund. Okay, big change. That era is over. We're in a new time period. Well, what's happening today in relation to that? Well, we still have the successor agency you just heard about. That's leftover monies that we have argued that we have control of when redevelopment was eliminated. We are developing projects in relation to that. So that's what's happening. And we have had a different kind of tax stream. Our city was operating with something like $60 million a year. Then we dropped down to 30, like around 2012. Then we came up recently to $42 million. I mean, that's a big change recently. And so how's, you know, what's happening with all of these changes? The city still seems to be progressing. People seem to think that we're on a steady, even track. Well, I just, no, we have to make constant changes here in order to adapt to this reality. And the issues that concern the people of Emeryville should be, first and foremost, are we a safe city? How can we continue to function here? What are the basics? And I can report to you that I think we are a safe city. We've had some reports that our crime rate has skyrocketed. Someone said at the dais last time that it went up 18 percent. Well, I'd like to be a little bit more specific about our, what's happened with our crime rate. Our crime rate for certain kinds of property crimes has gone up 2 percent for most property crimes. If you take into account the new reporting system we've adapted. We've adapted a reporting system that Chief DeHada decided that when someone calls and they report a crime, but they don't fill out a police report, that's now reported. And she's doing that, I think, probably for good reason, just so we have, keep track of when people call and they don't want to fill out a crime report. She maybe is avoiding a certain kind of cynicism that people who get robbed, and it's, no, she's going to report that. But the actual property crime rate is 2 percent. So it's not that bad. Our population's expanded by more than that. We have had an increase in some of our crimes that are, you know, crimes to property with people involved, like shoplifting is way up in the last year. I think that was up 49 percent. Well, you know, we're a big retail city, and that, you know, sometimes things happen like this. And we also are having people who are, you know, doing simple assaults, you could say. Their threatening behavior is up. So people report that, "No, someone was threatening me." And so we have some increase in that kind of crime. But overall, I think the safety of the, our police department is doing a good job. Our fire department has had a big challenge in the last year. Did you see that fire burning up there right off of San Pablo about six or eight months ago? Boy, that burned a place right down near to the ground. It was almost ready to be sheet rocked and covered, this huge development. The fire department got it out. No one was injured. Our fire department's quality is really much better than it used to be. I can tell you from yesteryear, Alameda County is better than our original Emeryville Fire Department. Things have improved. They are more specialized. They, they have been doing a good job, in my opinion. Our health, public health, you know, the basic minimum of what we have to do to survive, we're doing pretty well in this department. In California, there were about 700 deaths last year from West Nile virus. This is transmitted by mosquitoes. No one in Emeryville has died from West Nile virus in the last year. Alameda County mosquito abatement is doing a good job. We have been monitoring our lead in our homes that are being remodeled. We're actively working at reducing poisoning, especially to children with, you know, the health of our most vulnerable people, it really can be challenged with lead paint. And so I think I can report to you that we are actively working on this, and we'll probably continue. We're going to be interested in dealing with how we regulate smoking in our city. We are probably going to do something with our noise ordinance also, because continuous loud noise can be a difficult thing for health. So I think those basics we're doing well on in the last year. How are, or who are we as a city? Who are we as residents and as businesses in our city? And I can say that we are a city primarily of renters. That's become the case over the years. And our city has been becoming younger, and you can see that reflected right here on the dais, that the, this council is a fairly young group, with the exception being me here. And the, the city, I think, is being well represented by who you're seeing. I think we accurately represent what the voters of Emeryville wanted. It was a pretty decisive win for the three people that were newly elected here. And we are making certain decisions that I think reflect our values, like on January 17th, we decided to become a sanctuary city. That is a California value. And we did this, we studied it. You know, there could be some potential costs, not much. But California has really decided to look at this issue, and there's pending legislation before the state government, and we could become a sanctuary state. We have environmental values here in Emeryville that are very California. We want to keep reducing our greenhouse gases. We're not interested in going the other way. No, we're actively working at continuing on with that. We have decided that we could maybe do better by forming a energy purchasing agreement with our fellow East Bay cities. So we've joined this group called East Bay Choice, no, East Bay Community Choice Power. Or No Power.
East Bay Community Choice Energy.
East Bay Community Choice Energy. Where we're going to purchase power with other East Bay cities that could conceivably, probably will save us a little bit of money than buying from PG&E, but also probably pretty significantly reduce our greenhouse footprint even further by who we buy power from. We are interested in cleaning up our groundwater. We're not trying to make it worse. We're doing things around our city and our runoff, on our streets, to process the runoff and new developments, so that we are cleaning the street water by having it go into our groundwater. We're going to continue on with that. We're providing more recreational facilities in our city. We've recently got our swimming pool functioning on a year-round basis. We've decided, yes, it costs us a little bit of money, but this is, having additional recreation and improved livability in our city is an important value for us. And we want that, and we want to have simple things like our sidewalks repaired. We're recently repairing a lot of sidewalks around our city. Having a walkable, bikeable city is a value that this council really wants. We want this city to be a vital city that is livable. We are a non-NIMBY city. That means not in my backyard. No, we are a city that says we are willing to grow, increase in density if we can have a livable urban environment with more amenities. That's the basic principle, I think, you're seeing in this council before you. And we are negotiating with new developments about that to try to get more things about that. We're trying to increase our park areas and develop new parks and improve the parks that we have. Could I have the next slide, please? This is showing you the area around our train station. You can see a freight train coming in on one side, a passenger train on the other side. We have various kinds of developments happening in our city, one of which is called the Transit Center, which is really a biotech facility with some transit components. Biotech is providing some jobs for our city that are quality, long-term jobs. We've recently had Stanford Medical move into our town. And I think that some of our high school graduates will be able to go to Laney College, get enough of a technical education, that they can go get a real job right here in town. So we are concerned that we are going to create quality jobs in our city going forward. And we are also going to have quite a bit of population increase. Right here, I have, I have a list of some of the new things that we have in various states of consideration. What's called the Nadye Project on the northwest side of town, right up near the Ashby Interchange. There is potentially 186 units of new housing there. Right near the fixed-up Berkeley Park, Aquatic Park recently was, has been fixed up. So that was a good thing Berkeley did that. I personally worked hard on Tom Bates for years. Come on, fix that! They finally did it. We have 87 potential units on San Pablo, at 3706 San Pablo. This is, we're close, really close to having this number of affordable housing units built right there in San Pablo. The Sherwin-Williams development, we are close to having 540 units there. I think 80-some affordable units as a part of that. And then as a part of the marketplace development, there's one area that has 223 units coming up, another with 167, another with 66 units. That means 1,269 units in the next two and a half years, maybe, by the time they're all built out. Two people per unit. A lot of these are new three-bedroom units. Some are going to be more than two people. That means 2,670 new people in our city in the next two and a half years. You can see that is pretty major population expansion. We have to be concerned about a lot of things to make this added population have a livable city here. And we are. We're interested in expanding that park right up near the marketplace. I think we're going to be able to do that. We have expanded recently social services. Yeah, we could use some more slides here going forward, a little bit. Some of the new social services are at the new Emeryville Center for Community Life. We have dental services available for the first time for, starting right now, students at our school system. This is a major improvement in the lives of many of the children who go to our schools. We have healthcare services out of the same facility. We are able to take children who previously would fall through the cracks and actually get them on the road to a better education because their health needs are being met. This council is interested in keeping our social services up. We think we're going to be a high-quality city. We intend to do that. Of course, the center there, if you go up there just about any time, day or night, you're going to see lots of people using the recreational side of this new facility. You can see those fields being actively used, and of course, the gym is being used, the basketball camp on the weekends at 7:30. Boy, those basketball coaches are just reprimanding anyone who's late. It's serious stuff up there, in a good way. And it's really improving the lives of our, for our young people around our city. And I think that this is what cities should do, and we are starting to do this. We are also providing additional services for the homeless that really do exist within our city, and especially are camped out on the borders of our city. And we are paying some monies to help support homeless services to, we join with the City of Oakland in helping some homeless services there. And we also contribute to some monies for the city of Berkeley, and they have some services there. And it's only right that we do our fair share in the East Bay, because this is a way that we can help solve this crisis of homelessness that is obviously everywhere, and we can make a dent on this and make improvements. Could I have the next slide, please? You can see some of the active use at the, for our youths that we have happening. But also, that swimming pool is really open to everyone. We have all kinds of groups using that, early in the morning, later in the evening. You can see above that pool, there's a program where students are learning how to grow food. Next slide, please. The Emeryville Skate Park, right up on San Pablo, near CVS, is a total success. Have you noticed the volume of skaters there? It's remarkable. Anecdotally, I can tell you that the business owners around that park, who were so nervous about us putting in this portalo restroom, now are pleased. They're pleased because they can see that that neighborhood is absolutely cleaner because of that restroom. I think that was a great investment we made when we installed that. And we could do well to install other restrooms like that in some of our public locations, and we've talked about that for the Temescal Creek Park. Could we have the next slide, please? Go back one. Well, tenant protection, let's talk about that. We are a city of renters. A lot of renters suffer in today's rental environment. So we've passed some tenant protection ordinances that we believe will help out some of our tenants, negotiate better with landlords, but also make a more fair environment. And we were successful in cutting a deal with some of our property owners, who initially were a little upset, but we've reached an agreement. Next slide, please.
Gosh, I'm sorry. Jumping. Yeah. There we go. That's, that's the one you're looking at.
In addition to the minimum wage that we did a little while ago, we passed an ordinance called Fair Work Week. And because computing power can parse up everything, humans can be treated like inventory in the work process. That means that your work schedule could be unknown until finally you're being called in. This has caused a lot of work environments, especially in retail, to become not predictable, and the health effects for that. And people whose lives are deeply affected by their jobs is significant. So we passed, like the city of San Francisco and Seattle, a fair work week that means that they can have predictable schedules. We also had our minimum wage measured recently, and did it cause big troubles for our businesses? Well, all indications are, so far, no. Our retail environment is healthy and happy. It's doing what it should be doing. We haven't experienced a major dip in that. Next slide, please. Okay, the, I guess the next one was, go back one, please, or what, advance one. Here we go. Short-term rentals. We recently have been concerned with what it's like for you, living next to someone who's constantly doing Airbnb. We've heard a lot of problems with this, but at the same time, we've tried to create a regulated environment that people who, if they operate in a good way with short-term rentals, that they can earn a little bit of money on their property and not have it negatively affect the neighborhood. So we've, we've passed that recently. Next slide, please. Okay, what is ahead? Well, I gave you a little bit of look at what the kind of development that's ahead. We are potentially going to have a lot of work going on in town. And we also would like to continue to develop certain things about our city that require capital for making public projects. And we have recently reviewed our fiscal health, and we found that things have changed. In fact, the soaring rocket of 2014 to 15 retail sales and income to our city has plateaued. In fact, the soaring rocket of 2014 to 15 retail sales and income to our city has plateaued. You can look around you at any day, and you'll see the Amazon slash online deliveries in every block that's gone up. We feel lucky, partly, to have our retail sales plateaued. Many cities have seen retail sales go down, but because we're so centrally located and our retail establishments seem to be standing up, so we're still, we're doing okay in that department. But for the future, does retail income look like it's going to be the same? I don't know. Maybe not, probably not. We have to strategize about how we're going to earn our money going forward. And we've been reviewing our budget and thinking about that and thinking for the future about taxes. Maybe we'll ask you, the voters, to think about, should we have some kind of new tax if our retail income starts going down? We've looked at some of the fees that we get from the county and state now from our redevelopment area, that since redevelopment is lost, what are those funds called again when the money comes back through the?
Boomerang.
The boomerang funds are back. And we decided recently that we're not going to put them all into capital costs, partly because we have more ongoing expense this year. We are adjusting to that. And really, what's going to happen in years to come, the boomerang funds are going to get greater and greater as our redevelopment funds are paid off. And that's going to become more of a regular income source for us. We've had our commercial property selling at a pretty good clip, and we have this one-time money of $2.1 million that came in this last year from this tax that we have. And that goes into our capital fund, which is a great thing. We've had a new hotel built, the Hyatt Place Hotel. That should give us some additional monies going forward. Okay, next slide, please. I would say our business climate, all in all, is positive. We have a diversified income from all kinds of sources we didn't have in the past. And I think that we would be wise to continue to try to get businesses of different types to take us into this future economy that is, of course, unknown. We could have a downturn. And I'm pleased to tell you that we are prepared in that we have set aside enough funds that if we do have a downturn, we are at about 50% of our funds we put into reserves. And you could ask any other city if they have 50% of their various funds and reserves, and they're going to tell you, no, much less. So we are prepared for a downturn by having a really full set of reserves for us. What you're seeing now is a couple of projects. There's the Marketplace and the Sherwin-Williams project. The Marketplace is under construction. The Sherwin-Williams project is going to have some features in it that are going to give us park space and open space that's developed. One of the things that our surrounding cities have are more parks than we have. Oakland has a huge volume of parks per capita, but most of their parks are in the hills, not that available. Berkeley has about the same square footage of parks as Emeryville, but Berkeley's parks have been developed all years ago. What Emeryville needs to do, and what we are in the process of doing, is developing our parks. So I think you're going to see that in the future as a part of both of these projects you're looking at on the screen. We're going to develop our parks and have amenities in those parks. Next slide, please. Ashby interchange is going to be redeveloped, rebuilt, and as a part of that, new bicycling infrastructure is going on up there. So that will definitely be happening. Over the tracks, around 53rd Street into the Bay Street Mall, is going to be a new bridge. We are actively in design refinement and negotiating with the railroad to build this new bicycle and pedestrian bridge right over the tracks that's going to make a lot of the residents in Bay Street extremely happy because they're going to be able to walk their dogs right directly on the other side of the bridge there in a new place that is going to be right adjoining the Sherwin-Williams property. So I think you're going to be seeing a lot more livable space going forward. So where are we headed now? Well, we're headed to where we've been working on it, more of the same. We're going to keep our climate action plan going, keep our greenhouse reduction happening. Less greenhouses per capita than any city in the East Bay. Emeryville! We're going to do more homelessness outreach by cooperating with our adjoining cities and trying to do more to get these services to the homeless population. We are going to be pursuing small business support. Have you ever looked at all these new developments and just empty spaces sitting there? Well, why? Because when they were built, no infrastructure was put in all these retail spaces. We've got to find a way to make those spaces developed enough that they could be rented. And we're going to be actively studying that and finding a way to help these small neighborhood-serving businesses get established and not have the problem of the first amount of capital too high so they can't even get started. We're going to have bike and car share programs that are going to be more obvious. You're going to be seeing these blue bikes available in many locations around our city very soon. And people will be taking these even if 40th Street is totally locked up to get to MacArthur-Bart. No, people on those blue bikes are going to be getting there anyway. You'll also see, as a part of the Sherwin-Williams project, a shuttle for all of you in our town to go to West Oakland Bart, cutting out 18 minutes between MacArthur, West Oakland. If you're going to San Francisco, wow, people are going to find that popular, I guarantee you that. We are going to be talking tonight about how to have some ordinances about cannabis sales so people don't have trouble with this, that we can have medical marijuana available to those who need it. For the voters of California who approve recreational use of cannabis, we're going to accommodate that. And we're going to earn some tax money doing it, but we're going to make it so it's a good thing for our city and not a bad thing. So thank you for giving me this opportunity to tell you how I think we're doing. And please stick around and let us hear from you. Join our committees. We are actively looking for people to serve on our committees. And of course, we want to hear from you and your opinions about what we should do. Thank you very much. 4.2 proclamation of the City of Emeryville declaring March 2017 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Emeryville. I think it's up there, Scott. John, you were a part of the Red Cross, weren't you?
I was.
Whereas the American Red Cross Bay Area was founded in 1898. And whereas the American Red Cross, a leading voluntary agency chartered and authorized by Congress to act in times of need, providing compassionate assistance to people afflicted by personal, local, or national disasters. And whereas the American Red Cross Bay Area helped almost 1,777 people with temporary housing, clothing, food, and mental health counseling during 681 local disasters last year alone. And whereas people have counted on the American Red Cross for the information and skills they need to be safe at home, at work, at school, and at play. And last year, the American Red Cross trained 83,203 people in life-saving CPR, first aid, and water safety. And whereas throughout the Pillowcase Project and the Home Fires Campaign, over 9,474 individuals and family received fire prevention training, supplies, and/or smoke alarms. And whereas the American Red Cross staff deployed with the U.S. military to provide emergency communications, counseling, financial assistance, and a caring presence to over 6,930 local military families. And whereas the American Red Cross blood services support many Bay Area hospitals, providing them with more than 34,813 units of red cells, platelets, and plasma to patients in need. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Scott Donahue, Mayor of Emeryville, on behalf of the Emeryville City Council, hereby proclaim March 2017 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Emeryville. And I encourage all residents to be cognizant of and compassionate the compassion, courage, character, civic duty that is inherent in the American Red Cross mission to prevent and relieve human suffering. Proclaim this 21st day of March 2017.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Sheri Ellsworth. I'm a member of the Alameda County Red Cross Leadership Council. And joining me tonight is Madeline Biston Towey, who is external liaison, is working on disaster preparedness for the City of Emeryville. It is a great honor to accept this annual proclamation from the City of Emeryville declaring March as Red Cross Month. Starting in 1943, during World War II, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt proclaimed the first Red Cross Month. Since that time, every president, including President Trump, has designated March as a Red Cross Month throughout America. The key focus of our region here in the Bay Area is disaster response. And for 2016, there were 681 incidents and 150 in Alameda County for home fires and other terrible disasters each and every day. The families' households assisted were 386 here in Alameda County. We have many volunteers who also helped out during the recent Orville Dam disaster. Almost 200,000 residents were evacuated, and the American Red Cross and the local community opened 12 evacuation shelters for more than 2,200 adults and children. We had many volunteers who helped out during the Ghost Ship Fire Disaster in Oakland in December. Locally, the active volunteers, there were 5,278 disaster volunteers in our region and 668 in Alameda County this last year. We also serve the armed forces throughout the country. Here in the Bay Area, we were able to help 2,400 families and 4,500 service members. Our blood services region collected 34,800 blood donations and 13,300 in Alameda County. Please think about giving blood sometime if you are able. There is also a Great Red Cross mobile app to put on your cellphone. It will inform you about earthquakes happening in your area. It will also show you how to plan ahead for certain disasters or earthquakes, as well as how to recover from them. And it's fully free. Go to the App Store and search for Red Cross. Find earthquake, first aid, preparedness. Install them, and again, it's free. On behalf of the Alameda County Leadership Council and the California Coastal Region, we thank you for this proclamation. But most of all, we would also like to thank you and many of your city staff members who have worked closely with the American Red Cross over the years to make Emeryville a better-prepared city for all types of emergencies for future disasters. We would also like to acknowledge Lori Elephant, who has been working closely with Madeline and the Red Cross team. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
I just want to make a brief comment. As the mayor alluded, almost 20 years ago, I can't believe it, my first job out of college was Director of Disaster Relief Operations for the Red Cross of San Gabriel Valley. And all the things you mentioned tonight are invaluable services. But one of the other things I think what's worth noting is you go into the local school system, I know I did, between disaster deployments and teach basic aid, CPR, and preparedness for children, and I appreciate that today. Thank you.
Okay, with that, are there any committee vacancies?
Yes, we do have just a few. We've got a vacancy on the Housing Committee, one on Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee, two on Parks and Recreation, and one on Public Art. The Housing Committee has several applicants, and that appointment will be made on April 18th. For these others, especially Parks and Rec, you'll hear a report towards the end of the agenda tonight, where we'll talk about the fact that some of these vacancies may or may not still exist if some changes are made to membership. In any event, at this moment, those are the vacancies. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any special announcements from council members?
I have five, but I promise they're brief. First, for those who are interested in continuing the conversation related to the proposed dog park at Halleck Beach, the community meeting that I've offered to host for that will be held on Thursday, April 13th, between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. The Small Business Joint Study Session between the Planning Commission and the Emeryville City Council will take place here at City Hall on Tuesday, May 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. I would like to take the moment to congratulate Ripple Foods for winning the East Bay Innovation Award for Innovator in Food Technology. Ripple Foods is located here in Emeryville. They make milk from pea with an "A" on the end of it. And it's worth noting, because it is green. But it received the East Bay Innovation Award, and Councilmember Martinez and I had the pleasure of being there at the Fox Theater for the event. And so anytime we can award or recognize a small business here, I appreciate that. Next, Scientific Adventures for Girls is a program that is funded in part by Wareham Development, a major tenant and resident in our community. And they offer, it's run by two fantastic women. I had the opportunity to go and sit through a class. This offers science opportunities for girls at the ECL, eight weeks, one day a week after school programs to teach girls about science. And they're starting enrollment for their next session, which will study electricity at the ECL. You can register. And finally, there are two little boys named Grayor and Declan who are learning about how government works, and I just want to give them a shout-out.
Vice Mayor, could you repeat the date and time for the Town Hall?
For the dog park Town Hall?
Yes.
The date and time is 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., Thursday, April 13th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Karpio. I did arrive a little late for your presentation. What I noticed first is that your extensive presentation puts all the other previous mayor, including Diane, in a shade. And so I'm supporting you with sympathy, you know. So anyway, this is not really a compliment, but my objection was that although you made a real nice picture, Mr. Mayor, of the City of Emeryville, it would be best to, not only you, but to future people who make a presentation like you did, that your program be available for reading beforehand so that people like me be prepared to hear what you have to say. I'm not saying that what you said is not correct or is not up to date, but there is areas in which perhaps the public at large here in Emeryville must be informed. And I'm one of the old timers who have really, really good memory of what did happen in Emeryville before you were around and before the event did turn pretty bad. And one of them is... And one of them is that my association with Judson Steel, in which I knew the father, and he was an inventor, and I knew the people in the family, and I did visit the Judson Steel before they were, they were basically kicked out by the Emeryville City Council to make room for hotel or whatever, you know. And so as a consequence of that move, things just happened, like a bad woman, because the Judson people, and I must inform everybody here, they were the backbone of the building of the Bay Bridge and Richmond Bridge and all that, because they provided the steel. And they had a huge force. And basically, the whole Emeryville was working for them and with them. And soon as the Judson Steel had basically given away their electric furnace that the Bay Bridge fell from earthquake, I don't want to say it was a karma, but then, then we had no other resource local. And so all the things that we gave to the Chinese, the Chinese made the new Bay Bridge. And they, I would just want to say that to everybody here, they contracted with the people in charge for $1,400,000. And then the final billion was six...
Mr. Karpio, thank you. Your time is up.
I would like to ask you, you got 30 minutes, only had three minutes, you know, so...
Finish your sentence.
Is that we got built for $6,400,000, so $5 billion disappear. And I don't want to put the blame on somebody, because it's impossible to trace what's going on the DMTC, but...
Okay, Mr. Karpio, we got your message about...
...a question to ask people official. And thank you. And also, I would be one of you. Thank you.
Okay, next person, please. Laura, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Laura McCamey. I'm a resident and I'm also a member of the BPAC. And I just wanted to speak to you for a minute tonight about the Powell and Christie intersection. And that Powell area has come to the BPAC a couple times recently. And unfortunately, between the first time and the second time, somebody was hit, as you know, hit and killed there. And in 2005, the city did a study and spent half a million dollars on improvements. And I've heard talk of doing another study to see how those were doing. And I just want to say, I know of at least one person who was very seriously injured at the off-ramp, a bicyclist. We know that one person was killed, and I know there have been more injuries. To me, that's a study. That's the answer. It's not working. So I want to really urge all of you to please work with staff to move quickly to make improvements to this intersection, because it's a matter of life and death. And we've known it's a problem for a long time, but I think now is the time to take action to improve this intersection. I know that staff are moving ahead with flashing yellow arrows for the turning movements at Powell and Christie when there are pedestrians or bicyclists present, and I think that's a great first step. But I want to say, the BPAC had several other suggestions. One was to change in both, there's two-lane right turns on Christie heading southbound and on Powell heading eastbound, and to change that to single-lane turns, because the car in the second turn lane is less likely to see the pedestrian in the crosswalk, to change the angles of the curb there to slow down turning movements. Right now, the curbs are constructed to encourage fast turns, which is not safe for pedestrians. And the main thing that we, the BPAC has recommended is a red arrow phase, where cars cannot turn right on red, so that pedestrians have a safe space to cross. I just want to say that I'm sure that the improvements that the city did in 2005 have helped a little, but I would, my analogy is that if you were, if that street is like crossing shark-infested waters, everyone who has crossed it realizes how dangerous it is. I've seen the faces of other people crossing it. We all do it with this look of terror on our eyes, and nobody should have to do that. And if we do something that half solves it, then great, I only have to swim half as far through shark-infested waters, but I could still be eaten by a shark. In other words, we need to make it safe for pedestrians and bicyclists to get all the way across. We built that beautiful cycle track, but the crossing you have to do to get to it, the one across from Trader Joe's, is incredibly dangerous, because there is no time that cars aren't turning right on red. So I really urge you to make this a priority for staff and to move as quickly as possible. And unfortunately, because of the fatality, I, my understanding is that we, the city has the ability to move faster. So I just, I just want to thank you for your time and urge you to really make that a priority.
Thank you. City managers report.
No reports this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Any ex parte communications about items on the agenda?
I met with Wareham Development on March 4th for item 12.1.
Okay.
Move the consent.
I would just like to make a clarification, if we could, before we do that. Item 10.7, the second reading of an ordinance related to short-term rentals, there's a scrivenor's error in it, and so I just want to make sure and get confirmation from the city attorney that we can make that change at a second reading.
Yes, that's, that's correct. It's a clerical error, and so we are able to make that change without having to undergo another first and second reading.
Okay, so just for the record, it's Section 9-5.2111, moving the word from "make" to "making," second the consent motion.
Moved by Councilmember Pat, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowders. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Patz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Okay, on to public hearings. 11.1, cannabis regulations.
Good evening, Mayor Donahue, City Council members. I am Mirud Desai, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. This is a joint effort between my department and the city attorney's office. As you may recall, last month Andrea Visvaswarya, the Assistant City Attorney, walked you through these regulations in a study session. She's been out sick for a couple of days, so I'm taking, I'm doing this presentation in place of her. So as I mentioned, the council had a study session on the regulations last month, and there were three major things that the council gave direction on. One was, the council gave us a red light to go ahead and bring to you this two-permit local regulatory system, one which would involve getting a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission, and the other, an operator's permit from the police chief for both medical and recreational cannabis activities. The council also gave direction to us to develop regulations for a regional-serving retail outlet for either recreational or medical cannabis. The council also wanted to, wanted staff to give you more information on revenue generation and taxes in the cannabis industry. So today, we are here to talk about only the first bullet point, and that is the regulatory system for cannabis-related activities. So the framework that we have, we are proposing and is two-part. Like I'd mentioned, the cannabis-related activities and businesses would need to obtain two permits. One would be a major, a major conditional use permit from the Planning Commission, and the other, an operator's permit from the police chief. They would need to obtain the conditional use permit first. This would be a public hearing, and this would involve notification to the neighbors within 300 feet, and which the folks could come and participate and give comments on the location of the site where cannabis-related business needs to, wants to install. The Planning Commission would then recommend approval of the planning regulations, which it did in December of last year. And this establishes the CUP for commercial cannabis users in the context of operator's So in terms of conditional use permit, and these are the Planning Commission recommendations to the city council, the commercial cultivation is not an allowed use. This was a direction that had been given to the council earlier. And in response to a public comment, the Planning Commission's recommendation includes allowing cultivation as accessory to research and development. In terms of personal cultivation, the cannabis plants may not be grown in common areas of a multi-unit development or in common areas of any commercial or industrial building. Personal cultivation is allowed in accessory structures, and that the cultivation may occur outside of the building in context of single-family residences and duplexes. And this was the direction that the council gave staff last month. The personal cultivation would need to meet all applicable building and life safety codes, including electrical and ventilation systems. And it would need to be in full compliance with all the applicable provisions of the state law regarding growing, processing, transportation of cannabis plants for personal use. And no more than six plants may be cultivated per private residence. And this was another direction that the council gave us to change the language from per dwelling unit to per private residence to make clarity in terms of what was being So the second, so you have three basic uses of cannabis activities. One is cultivation, and the second is manufacturing, and the third is retail. So we are now in the manufacturing, testing, and distribution of cannabis-related activities, and to allow such uses for both medical and recreational cannabis, and allowing for research and development. And the regulations also include the provision to cultivate a few plants for research purposes. And the regulations would be creating a new industrial use type called cannabis manufacturing. So manufacturing, testing, distribution of different cannabis products, such as extracts, concentrates, edible products, and topical products, have characteristics similar to manufacturing of pharmaceuticals. Therefore, the cannabis manufacturing would be allowed in the same zoning districts as where pharmaceutical manufacturing is allowed today in our city. And these are the following zoning districts. Again, the cannabis manufacturing will be classified as a use of special concern, and it would require a major conditional use permit that will go to the Planning Commission for approval. The existing performance standards related to noise, odor, light, glare, air quality, waste, and vibration will continue to apply, and this is in existing regulations we have in the planning code. And in, and this map shows where cannabis manufacturing is permitted. So all the colored areas of the map are the different zones which are listed where manufacturing, cannabis manufacturing activities will be permitted. There is no buffer zone here. There are no sensitive receptors from which any kind of buffer zones have been outlined. So this is a pretty simple, straightforward area where cannabis manufacturing will be permitted if the city council goes ahead and approves this set of regulations. In terms of manufacturing and a testing/distribution activity, the conditional use permit would run with the land, and this business would also need to obtain an operator's permit from the police chief, which is an annual permit. So the operator's permit is on, would need to be renewed on an annual basis. Now, the third component of cannabis activities is the retail or the dispensary. The retail cannabis sales are proposed in the same locations where tobacco shops are currently allowed. And these are the three different zones where tobacco shops are allowed and where the staff is proposing that the cannabis sales could be located. In addition, retail sales will also be classified as use of special concern, therefore going to the Planning Commission for approval. And in addition to that, the, the location requirement, there is a buffer zone that within these designated zones, retail sales cannot be located if it is within 250 feet of any public parks, religious institutions, or elementary and secondary schools. So when you map that out, what you see in this dark yellow or mustard-colored would be the possible locations where retail sales of cannabis would be allowed. In terms of the land use regulations, the conditional use permit, if the council approves it tonight, there will be a second reading on April 4th, and it will go into effect on May 5th, after, 30 days after the second reading. Now, the second portion of this two-part regulatory system is the operator's permit. And the purpose is to ensure that the business is not a front for any kind of illegal activity. It will be an annual permit that would need to be renewed annually. The grounds for denial and revocation include certain felony convictions sanctioned by any, another licensing authority, failure to pay city fees and taxes, and any reason that the state could deny license for. Other things that the operator's permit would oversee is hours of operation, odor control, security, labeling, packaging, insurance, record-keeping. The police chief has the authority to issue regulations to implement this ordinance. And it also includes the council-recommended provision to ensure that those who have been harmed by the war on drugs, enforcement measures in the past are not precluded from participation in the cannabis industry. This was something that the council recommended at the study session last month. And the effective date for the operator's permit ordinance is requested to be September 1st of this year, and this is to allow staff time to implement the new regulatory system. As the conditional use permit, we already have the process and the system in place because it's, it's needed for different, other different activities. However, for the cannabis operator's permit, this is a new kind of permit, so a little bit more time is needed by staff to come up with a process. And therefore, we are requesting that the effective date of the operator's permit ordinance be September 1st. This would not really have too much of an impact on those businesses who would want to set a business in our city, because they would need a conditional use permit anyway from the Planning Commission. And so by the time that takes place, it would be September, and there wouldn't be any kind of a time delay. Also, they can start working on TIs with the anticipation that they will get a permit, operator's permit. So this request for September 1st date will not in any way, we don't believe, going to have an impact on the time for businesses who want to establish themselves in our So we received a few public comments after the staff report was published. One was to request, a request to allow commercial cultivation. Now, if the council is inclined to consider this, then we recommend that you adopt the ordinances in front of you today and refer this matter to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, and it would come back to you and would, we would amend the ordinances to include the commercial cultivation, if that is the desire of the council today. The other comment that we received was a discrepancy in buffer requirements between AUMA and MCRSA. So AUMA, these are both state pieces of legislature. AUMA is the Proposition 64, which is, which was passed by the Waters in November, and MCRSA is an existing piece which governs medical potion, medical marijuana. So the AUMA allows local jurisdiction to implement any kind of buffer requirements. It also, it states that it will be 600 feet from schools, but it allows local jurisdictions to change that. Whereas the MCRSA stipulates that it be 600 feet from schools. Staff anticipates that as the state goes forward, they will need to reconcile these two pieces of legislation. And we expect that AUMA, which is a water-approved mandate, and which gives local jurisdictions further, more discretion, we expect it to be reconciled in the favor of AUMA. Therefore, we are, we are requesting, or we are recommending that the buffer for the retail sales be 250, 250 feet. If, as time progresses and state reconciles these two pieces of legislation towards 600 feet from public schools, then we would come back and change our ordinance. In any case, if that happens, then, then a business which is less than 600 feet from a school will not receive a license from the state. So it will not be able to operate anyway till the state comes with a certain regulation. Does that make sense? Or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Another, another comment that we received today in the letter, which was also CC2 all of you, was regarding the method of buffer measurement. So how do you measure that? We do, the planning department does notifications on a routine basis, and as a, as a practice, we take the measurement from the parcel line and not the building footprint, and we will continue to do this regarding the buffers for cannabis sales as well. So our recommendation is that the council adopt the first readings of the two ordinances. One is amending Title IX, which is the planning regulations, and the other is repeal, replace, and retitle Chapter 28, Title V, and that is the operator's permit. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Mayor, I have a question.
Clarifying questions.
I have one. So regarding the planning commission's recommendation against commercial cultivation, I was wondering if you could expand on that and if possible, if they were just reiterating what our previous council had expressed, what, last March, I think?
Yes, that was, they were basically, that's the direction we got from this previous city council, not to allow that, and we mentioned that, and they went with that. They did not elaborate further.
So they weren't necessarily given any more information because at that time?
Correct, correct. We, the staff recommendation was the council direction.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Any further clarifying questions? Okay, let's hear from the public about this proposed ordinance. Who would like to speak? Mr. Carpio?
And I remember reading in 1950s, critical report about the TNC, that, the chemical that comes out of marijuana. And at that time, there was nothing that was proven that, but it was, it was an ingredient that would worsen the condition of tuberculosis. And I haven't read anything that contradicts that study. It was not a study that was directed for Orkan, the use of marijuana. It was just a study that was made in analysis of all the plants, not specifically for smoking or use or for eat. But this is what the danger that I see that, and I could relate that. I have two friends that passed away, Lori Bright and Al Hasser, and both were light smokers of marijuana. I don't know if what they were smoking was legal or not, but I know that one of them have had a life insurance and to the surprise of his wife, when he passed away, the life insurance didn't cover the death that he contracted to get marijuana. So I just want, this is my own experience, my own knowledge, and everybody wants to smoke a joint and all that, it's okay with me, but I really wanted to make this clear that marijuana is not a holy smoke. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
My name is Michael Sotman, and I'm the person that submitted some public comments earlier considering the buffer zones and commercial cultivation.
Excuse me, would you take the microphone up a little bit?
Yes, my name is Michael Sotman, and I'm the person that submitted comments regarding the buffer zones and commercial cultivation. I'd like to thank the city council for considering the ordinance and my comments. I'd also like to thank staff for their very able work on this issue, and I agree with their recommendations to send this to planning commission for further consideration. Are there any questions about my comments that were made, or? No? Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Nasir Azimi. I'm the president of Ohana Operations. We are a wholesale and retail incubator in the industry and implement our incubation model with high-tech solutions. Appreciate all of your hard work with regards to regulating marijuana and appreciate all the work that staff has done. One request I have is, in the context of site-based cultivation, conditional use permit, we would like to see you allowing multiple operating permits within one conditional use permitted facility so that we can implement our incubator model within your particular city. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Should we give some direction? What are our feelings here?
Well, I have, I would love for staff to have the opportunity to answer whether or not we would be able to have multiple operator's permit on one site.
It's the public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing is closed.
She really wants you to bang the gavel.
There you go. Do you have an answer?
So, so a conditional use permit is for the location. So if you have a building and it has multiple tenants and different tenants want to establish, you know, cannabis manufacturing activities, then it is possible to have a conditional use permit that allows that to occur in the whole building, but the individual operators would need operator's permit. So the person who, you know, yeah, the individual, that's the whole idea of the operator's permit, that who are, who's the individual, who's the business, what is their business program, what are their security measures? Those are the kind of things are seen, are going to be reviewed in an operator's permit. Therefore, each business would need an operator's permit. Now, if there are several businesses in one big building, then I don't see any reason why that one conditional use permit does not apply to the whole building under that umbrella. Because what we are looking at that time in a use permit is, is there enough parking? Is there, I mean, is it in the right location, for example? Is it within that map that I showed you? So, so, I mean, we don't need to add anything extra to the ordinance
Right.
in terms of what he is proposing, whether that is possible or not.
Thank you.
My question then would be, so if there is one operator that has operator's permit and they're doing different uses, so manufacture and retail in the same site, is that possible?
No, that will, that will require separate. Why? Because, A, we are only allowing retail sales, well, they are different maps.
Yes.
For starters.
Okay.
So it's unlikely that they're going to coincide. Also, council is looking only for one retailer, so that situation is sort of moot where it would occur that frequently.
Great. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
But I want to...
Could you speak at the microphone?
That actually clarifies the situation and it should address our purpose. One question I have is if a facility, if one single facility under one address has retail and a manufacturing, can we get two conditional use permits since there are no distance buffer between those entities? We get one conditional use permit for retail, one for manufacturing to implement our incubator model within each component. Want to make sure that that would be permissible.
I don't see any reason why that should not occur.
Yeah. It would be just the way we would regulate research facilities now for pharmaceuticals. That's would be the same thing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you so much.
So I just also wanted to bring back to the discussion what I had asked in the clarifying questions, that the, the planning commission was not operating on any more information than the previous city council had, which was actually very little at the time when we decided not to explore the idea of commercial cultivation. So I wanted to put that out there, that we could have staff look at that for future consideration in light of information, new information that's coming to council from possible businesses. And, and you know, as, as we're in a space where we're looking at our mid-year budget, I think it's, it's, it's a prescient time to think about other ways to diversify our revenue base. And, and at the same time, realize that every one of these CUPs is going to come before the planning commission, and every operator's permit is going to come before our chief of
When we gave the direction before about no cultivation, I think we were just thinking, oh, our cities and an urban location, it couldn't possibly work here, but that isn't necessarily the case.
Yeah, and I don't think you even got to participate in that conversation, Scott. I think you might, you might have been excused at that meeting, so we, you didn't even get to give your input that day. So I'm the only one who is to blame on this current council for skipping over commercial cultivation, but yeah, that's, I just, I felt the responsibility to, to make sure that all of you understood why the planning commission made that recommendation.
I don't have a problem with considering commercial cultivation. Would have to, you know, go through the normal processes of any other business. I'd be open to it.
Mayor, may I ask for some clarification? So we, what you have before you tonight does not include any provisions for commercial cultivation.
Right.
And so you saw the staff recommendation that if you do want to consider commercial cultivation, that you send that back to the planning commission and allow staff to do whatever research it needs to in order to kind of get that going. But our recommendation is that you adopt what's before you tonight, give us direction to explore commercial cultivation, bring that commercial cultivation piece to you separately.
Yes, sorry, so I was just starting at the end of that
Gotcha.
recommendation with that, with, I would respond with the recommendation to send this to planning commission.
I think we've all just agreed.
Yeah, we are.
I'm okay studying it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So do we want to move to adopt these ones?
I have a couple of points before. Just the staff report and then the ordinance that are in here, actually, there's a disconnect on an item. So for the city attorney's benefit, section 9-5.2207, subparagraph A2, you wrote in the staff report that you were removing the last words related to dwelling unit and including the language, "a residence as defined," but in the ordinance, it doesn't actually say that. You didn't make the change.
I'm sorry, can you give me that code reference again?
It's 9-5.2207, A2, the last words of the last sentence, dwelling unit. It's still in the draft ordinance, and it was supposed to be changed to, as it says in the staff report, "a residence as defined" under Health and Safety Code section 11302 or something.
Yeah.
So I think that needs to be changed. And then I just, I just want to reiterate from the study session that with council's support, for those who have asked, there will be an equity component that will be evaluated by council in the future as part of the regulatory scheme. And then I just had one other item. Maybe it comes from growing up in farm country, but you know, there's, Prop 64 has language to regulate the use of fungicides and pesticides for what will be commercially available cannabis. Those restrictions don't apply to personal use cultivation, so the six plants that we let people grow in their backyard don't have any restrictions on that. However, microbutanol, Eagle 20, there's a number of chemicals and fungicides that are extremely harmful to humans that are used without much thought, and my concern is that we are going to allow people who often can't keep a house plant alive to now grow their own cannabis, and that my concern would be that they would go to the store, pick up a commercial pesticide or fungicide, unaware of the fact that that actually becomes hydrogen cyanide once it's heated. And so that chemical being on a leaf, once taken and used for personal consumption, smoked, actually causes nerve and brain damage and other types of harms to humans. And so I don't want to hold the ordinance up tonight on this, but there is a gap, in my opinion, in Prop 64 as to how we protect people who do personal cultivation. And so what I would ask is that if council is supportive of it, when we do the regulatory piece of this, I know there's going to be some outreach done to the community, I would just like to see us include really overt information about the harms of certain chemicals and pesticides and their use in the community, if people are okay with that.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, I 100% agree with you. I would even go just a tiny step further to promote organic cultivation.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, and yeah, even, even some herbicides are dangerous, and I would definitely want to err on a robust campaign and keep people doing organic farming, just as they would with the lettuce in there in their own backyards. So thank you for bringing this up. I think it's really important, and I think you've identified a huge gap in what we're doing, but I think without the means to enforce what people are doing, I think that the education piece is the right way to go. So thank you very much for bringing that up.
Okay.
And I agree that I would want to do that.
I also completely agree. I think that's important.
My only other comment is I want to personally thank council member Martinez, who has invested a ton of time and effort into shepherding this forward to the point where we're going to vote on it, and I think your leadership is commendable, and I appreciate the work you've done, I know with me, on some of the concerns I had to make sure that the public health is protected, and I really appreciate your work.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
I would like to let you make that motion, actually.
All right, I would move that we approve these proposed ordinances.
I'll second the motion.
So if I can break this down, if, in order to protect the record, if we could have a separate motion as to each ordinance?
Okay.
And if you would like to first read by title only?
Oh, so let me move to read by title only.
Second, the motion to read by title only.
Moved by council member Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowers. Council member Martinez?
Aye.
Council member Medina?
Aye.
Council member Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowers?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville amending the planning regulations in Title IX of the Emeryville Municipal Code to add Article 22 to Chapter V concerning standards for cannabis-related activities and to make other related modifications to the planning regulations, sequel determination is exempt pursuant to sequel guidelines, section 15061 sub-B, sub-3.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Second.
Moved by council member Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowers. Council member Martinez?
Aye.
Council member Medina?
Aye.
Council member Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowers?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Do you need a motion to read by title for the next one?
Yes, please, but before we move on to that, I wanted to clarify that the ordinance that you just adopted was with the change that Vice Mayor Bowers had made regarding that one section.
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so this is a motion to read by title for the next ordinance.
Second.
Moved by council member Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowers. Council member Martinez?
Aye.
Council member Medina?
Aye.
Council member Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowers?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. A quick thank you to staff for stepping in. Really quickly, I want to thank Maru, who's not listening. I want to thank you for stepping in. You did an excellent job.
Yes, and there was actually a whole team of staff that has been working on this issue consistently, so I want to express my appreciation for all of the regular meetings that you've been having and the input you've been taking from the public and from council as well, so thank you.
Okay, on to action items. 12.1.
Really quickly, I want to thank Maru, who's not listening. I want to thank you for stepping in, you did an excellent job.
Yes, and there was actually a whole team of staff that has been working on this issue consistently, so I want to express my appreciation for all of the regular meetings that you've been having and the input you've been taking from the public and from council as well, so thank you.
Okay, on to action items. 12.1.
Oh, it's 11.2.
There's the second public hearing.
My apologies.
Master fee schedule.
Master fee schedule.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have a short presentation.
Moving along.
Okay. Every year, the city adopts the master fee schedule and changes are made during the year as necessary. This time, the Planning Division proposed to add new fees for the short-term rental program. These are application, renewal, and appeal fees. A plan, sorry, a fire plan renewal fee was omitted from the fee schedule. We would like to restore that fee. The Public Works Department proposed to adjust three fees to reflect the sewer rate increase that was approved by the City Council last year and the new rate charged by our consultant for inspection work. We recommend that the City Council approve these changes. Any questions? Nope. Thank you.
This is open for the public to comment upon. Any public comment? Public hearing on this issue. Okay, seeing none. I close the public hearing. And any feedback about this?
Move the approval of the fee schedule.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Vice Mayor Bowers, seconded by Councilmember Pats. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowers?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Okay, this closes the public hearing, and now we're on to action items, 12.1.
So we are distributing a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that you're about to see, just for your reference. We are here again to talk about the request from Wareham for a credit and refund of the transportation impact fee for the Emery Station West Transit Center project. So we took a lesson from the last time we were here in January on this topic, and we have developed a recommendation for you tonight. That recommendation is that the City Council grant Wareham a transportation facility impact fee credit of $500,000 for the Emery Station West Transit Center project. Alternatively, the council may wish to consider granting a credit of the entire impact fee of $728,000 and some change, or some other amount up to that maximum, or you may consider denying the request. Just to remind you, these are some pictures of the project in question, the Emery Station West Transit Center project. This is from Horton and 59th Street. This is an elevated view from the same general location. This is from across the tracks at the public market, and you can see the bus bays here inside the building. So here's an overview of my presentation tonight. First, a brief background, and then some brief history of the project, which we thought might be helpful to you. Then we'll go over the four options that we've developed for you to consider, then legal analysis that you requested, a summary of the communications that we've had with Wareham, and finally, a conclusion. So, background. We were here previously on January 17th. You considered the request, and you continued it to a future date, and you directed staff to provide several things, including options for you to consider and a recommendation, a legal analysis of the validity of the request since the project was approved under prior regulations, and some information on our communications with Wareham. We also felt that a brief history of the project might be helpful to you, so here's that brief history. The Transit Center project has been planned for about 15 years, and it's become more complicated and more expensive over that period. In 1990, after the Loma Prieta earthquake closed the Oakland Amtrak station, the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency and Wareham built a new train station in Emeryville, and it is now the fourth busiest Amtrak station in California after Los Angeles, San Diego, and Sacramento. The city began planning for a transit center next to it on what was referred to as the mound site, the surface parking lot north of it, in 2002. In 2003, the Planning Commission considered a proposal from the Public Works Director for a parking structure with bus bays, and the commission rejected that proposal as not being dense enough for this urban location. So in response to that, staff then undertook feasibility studies of a possible mixed-use project, including residential and commercial uses. In 2004, the Redevelopment Agency selected Wareham to develop the site and entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with them in 2005. And then over the years that followed, Wareham developed several schemes for the site, including a 160-unit condominium tower and an office-lab building, these are two different options, over six levels of parking. Finally, in 2008, Wareham proposed a 250,000-square-foot office and lab tower over two levels of parking, and then a separate 675-space, seven-level garage structure on an adjacent site. And that is the Emery Station West Transit Center and Heritage Square Garage project that was approved by the City Council in February of 2010. This project is a complicated deal. It involves funding and cooperation from a number of entities. I may have neglected to list some of them, but major ones include the California Transportation Commission, the Capitol Corridor, Amtrak, the Federal Transportation Administration, AC Transit, and the City and Redevelopment Agency, and of course, Wareham, not to mention the people who were responsible for cleaning up the site. And over a 15-year period, there have been ongoing discussions and amended agreements about site remediation between the city and agency, Wareham, and the original site owner, Westinghouse, which was subsequently taken over by Viacom and then subsequently taken over by CBS. Over this period, the cost of remediation increased from about $4.2 million to about $9.3 million, and the cost of the city's development impact fees also increased from about $195,000 in 2010 to almost $2.5 million today. So that's a real quick history. Concerning options, we've identified four possible options for you to consider. First, approve a fee credit and refund of $500,000 as requested by Wareham. Second, approve a fee credit and refund up to the full amount of $728,000. Third, approve a fee credit and refund of some other amount up to the maximum, and finally, deny the request. So I'll briefly go over each of these options. First option, $500,000. There are, as you may recall, there are two public facilities that are eligible for funding by the transportation facility impact fee that are included in this project. One is the Transit Center Plaza and Platform Extension, and in the capital improvement program, that includes a developer contribution of $208,420. So that clearly was a developer expense. The other is called the Public Parking and Bus Bays at Transit Center project facility. That's really the podium of the building. That is 100% grant-funded in the capital improvement program at $4.2 million, but the construction valuation of it, according to our building division, is about $5.9 million, and the additional $1.7 million is funded by Wareham. However, some of those podium features benefit Wareham, including private parking spaces, the lobby, the building core, and of course, the fact that the podium serves as a foundation for the tower above, so it's therefore built to a somewhat higher standard. However, some of this $1.7 million may be attributable to the public project that is eligible for the transportation facility impact fee funding. In addition, the cost of remediation of the site, as I previously said, has more than doubled from $4.2 million to $9.3 million, with the increase being paid by Wareham. As Wareham has pointed out to us, even if the podium structure with a public parking and bus bays, that is the public facility that is eligible for impact fee funding, even if that were a standalone structure with no private office-lab tower on top of it, the site would still have to be remediated at the same cost. And therefore, at least some of the cost of remediation could be attributed to the public project that's eligible for funding from the impact fee. So between all of this, between the extra podium costs and the extra remediation costs compared to the CIP, Wareham has spent at least an additional $291,580. Where does that number come from? It's simply the difference between $500,000 and the developer contribution for the other project, the Transit Center Plaza Platform Extension. So with that $208,420 developer contribution and an additional $291,580 attributable to those other additional costs, that would equal a total credit and refund of $500,000. And this is the option that staff recommends. Option two is a similar analysis as option one, but in this option, we would assume that instead of the, whatever that other number was, the $291,580, we would assume that Wareham spent an additional $520,213 on those extra costs, and then that would total the full amount of their fee of $728,000. So that would justify giving them back the entire impact fee that they paid. Third option is an amount up to the maximum. And again, it would be the same analysis as options one and two, but in this one, we would assume that Wareham spent some other additional amount of money, less than option two, on the extra podium costs and extra remediation costs. And finally, option four is to simply deny the request. The basis for this could be that the request was not properly filed at the time the building permit application was submitted and did not include the required information, that there is no funding from the transportation facility impact fee in the capital improvement program for either of the two public facilities in the project, so Wareham's contributions did not really save the fee fund any money, and thirdly, that some of the public benefits for which the project received development bonus are the same public facilities for which a fee credit is sought.
Clarifying question. So the bases that you've provided, we don't need to have one of these bases, correct? There's other reasons why. We could say that for policy reasons, we don't agree with refunding credit, making credit.
If you wish to deny this, you can...
For any reason. It's not like we have to rely on one of these.
No, you do not have to rely on these. That's right. You asked staff for a legal analysis as to whether this was a legal request for a fee credit, given the fact that the project was approved under previous regulations and the fee credit is under current regulations. So here is that analysis. Section 91104 of the planning regulations gives me the authority and the responsibility to interpret the planning regulations. Section 91103G of the planning regulations, the current regulations, says, "Any project which has been approved prior to the adoption of these regulations may be completed in accordance with plans for which the planning approval was granted, provided the planning approval has not expired." So this is kind of a link between previous projects and the current regulations. Then again, in section 951003F, it says, "Any use allowed under a planning entitlement, including but not limited to a conditional use permit, design review permit, or variance," and this project is a conditional use permit and design review, "that was approved prior to the adoption of these planning regulations and that has not expired is deemed to be a conforming use and subject to any conditions included in its approval." The conditions of approval of the project, as adopted by the City Council in February of 2010, say, among other things, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the building official shall confirm that all applicable fees due at the issuance of a building permit have been paid. So that's kind of a bridge between the prior regulations and the current regulations, because the project was approved under the current regulations, but by the time the building permit is issued, the current regulations are in effect. The fees that are referenced in that condition included a traffic impact fee, as it was called at the time, of about $195,000, and also a statement that the fee estimates were preliminary and that the fees would be recalculated when they were due. So when the building permit was issued, the fees were recalculated, and the transportation facility impact fee, the new name, had increased to $728,000, which is what they paid. Section 951905A of the current code states that applicants shall pay impact fees unless they are entitled to an adjustment exemption or fee credit. So again, we have a reference to the fee credit and the impact fees that were originally imposed under the prior regulations, then recalculated under the current regulations. And section 951906A states that impact fees shall be paid in full prior to the issuance of a building permit. So taking all of these together, it is my interpretation that these provisions clearly indicate that the Emery Station West Transit Center project is eligible to apply for an impact fee credit, even though it was approved under prior regulations. Now, there was one particular point of the current regulations that was questioned, and that is section 951911F that states that no credit shall be provided against impact fees if an applicant received a development bonus in accordance with section 94204. Section 94204 did not exist when this project was approved, so the project did not receive an impact, a development bonus under that section. A strict interpretation of section 951911F would be that if a project did receive a development bonus under section 94204, it is not eligible for fee credit, and the corollary to that, kind of the opposite of that, is if a project did not receive a development bonus under section 94204, then it is eligible for a fee credit. Under this interpretation, the project is eligible because it did not receive a development bonus under section 94204. So all of this is to say that in staff's opinion, this is a legal application. Concerning our communications with Wareham, we've been communicating with them since the summer of 2015 about these fees. These communications included letters, emails, and three meetings with me and the city manager and Wareham representatives. You've all been provided with copies of those emails and those letters, so you pretty much have everything that staff has in regard to those communications. At the first meeting on August 24, 2015, we provided a revised fee estimate that reduced the total impact fees by about $877,000 from a previous estimate that they had been provided. And we also provided information on how they could apply for a credit of the transportation facility impact fee. Wareham representatives all assert that I said at that August 2015 meeting that the project would get a credit of the fee. That is not the recollection of myself or the city manager. We believe that we simply told them how they could apply for the fee. They were adamant that, no, we said they would get a credit of the fee. In the fall of 2016, just this past fall, Wareham and staff exchanged emails and letters concerning the fee, in which, again, they asserted that I had said the fee would be waived, and I attempted to clarify that only the City Council can grant a fee credit. At a second meeting that we had on October 11 last year, Wareham agreed with the reading of the code that only the City Council can grant the credit, but they said they would wait to see what the final fees were going to be before they decided whether or not to request such a credit. On November 2 last year, they submitted their building permit application, they paid the impact fee, and they did submit a letter requesting a credit. We had a third meeting with them following your January meeting, and that occurred on February 22, about a month ago. At that meeting, Wareham agreed to formally request a fee credit of $500,000, which I believe they had previously informally discussed, but now they have put it in writing, and that is now their official request. And they also provided further information about the remediation costs, that doubling of the remediation costs that I referenced, that was information that staff didn't previously have. So we now have that additional information. So in conclusion, we recommend a fee credit of $500,000. Alternatively, you may wish to consider a credit or refund of the full amount or some other amount up to the full amount, or you may deny the request. It's my interpretation that this project is eligible to apply for a fee credit, even though it was approved under prior regulations. We've provided you with some additional information on our communications with Wareham and the history of the project, which we hope you found helpful. And a resolution is before you, approving the fee credit for $500,000. You can, of course, modify that if you wish, and that's been prepared for your consideration. That concludes my presentation. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Any clarifying questions before we take public testimony? Okay, thank you. We have some speakers on this issue. Mr. Campbell.
My name is Dave Campbell. I'm advocacy director with Bike E-Space. We do bike advocacy work in Alameda and Contra Costa counties, including right here in Emeryville, where I just checked our database, we're over 30 members from Emeryville in our organization. So I'm here to speak on their behalf to request that you deny this request, with the idea being, not understanding the staff's wonderful legal explanation with total clarity, there's a lot that this money can be put to good use for in Emeryville. This is your bike plan 2012, total cost $60 million. We got an update at the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting last week on how the city is doing implementing this bike plan, and they've got a long ways to go, and that's under $2012. This is a $60 million bike ped plan, and it's time to update this plan, and the city's going to be doing that over the course of the next year, which means the cost of making this a modern, bikeable, walkable city will be more. And so this money can go towards those bike ped improvements, and staff can give you more details about this, but we're finding that when we redesign a street, even to put a bike lane in, it's about $100,000 a mile on average. So this request would get us about seven miles of just basic bike lanes. We're starting to do protected bike lanes, where the bike lane has some sort of physical protection between it and the moving traffic, and we're finding those are about half a million dollars a mile, which means this request would get us about one mile of protected bike lanes. The money is very much needed to bring Emeryville's bikeway designs up to modern compliance, and this money can be used to match both Measure B and Measure BB monies that come from the county, as well as regional and state grants, which like to see that local match. So it's super important that this money be kept towards transportation improvements. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next person.
My name is Laura McCamey. Again, I'm a resident. I just want to say, first of all, please, 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 please deny this request. I was part of the general planning process, I don't remember how many years ago, I was relatively new in Emeryville at that time, and many of the residents came to lots of meetings. We talked about our vision for our city, and out of that came a general plan that included densities and heights for different areas. What Mr. Bryant failed to mention in his presentation is that this area was zoned, I believe, for 75 feet, and so this is more than double that. That was their bonus. That's why they did these things. They don't get to get out of the fees. I want to second what Dave Campbell said, we really need these funds to make Emeryville the livable city that the residents envisioned it being. It's going to help, it's very short sighted of Wareham to ask for this money back because it's going to help the tenants of their building, these improvements that are going to happen, and it's their responsibility to contribute to the city that they are part of and they have profited immensely from. This project not only has a big height impact, it also has a huge impact on a bike boulevard or bike lanes, so that's doubly reasoned for them to pay that transit impact fee. And I want to say that the code that was in the presentation about they can ask for a refund if they didn't get a bonus under this code seems to me a very technical, like a technicality, because they did get a bonus, maybe not under that particular code, maybe it was an earlier code, but they did get a bonus. So I just want to be really clear about that. And I also want to say, I feel very burned, as many of us do, by recent experiences with people who didn't really get a mandate but act like they have a mandate to do whatever they want, and that's what this feels like to me. You know, this was a very unpopular project that just barely made it through. This isn't like, woohoo, we're so glad to have them here. They should be grateful to the city that we let them build this gigantic project that's way out of scale for the neighborhood, and so I urge you to deny this.
Vice Mayor, Council, Ruth Major. A fee, a fee is a payment made to a professional person or public body in exchange for advice or services. A fee is a payment that someone gives in return for a service, and I believe Wareham has had those. It's actions such as this, Wareham requesting the money back, this rebate back, that caused our organization to begin the Residents United for a Livable Emeryville. We got tired of these paybacks, and here comes another one. So a lot of residents are very upset about this. The fees developers pay help make the city work, help our infrastructure, help with affordable housing, help with the roads, the structures, everything. So we need this money. Wareham received 4.2 million from the redevelopment agency. We are collectively still paying the debt on the redevelopment agency. They got 4.2 million from Caltrans plus a federal grant, and I don't know, I would like to know the numbers, but I bet over 50% of our redevelopment debt has something to do with Wareham. So I really am concerned that there has been a request for this. What I've read about this new building is that they expect to have 98% occupancy. I'm thinking of the rent and the increase in land value. It's a pity the city didn't think to develop 99-year leases on the land as opposed to giving it away. And also, the last thing, there's been a lot of concern about this project, and one of the things, as I've said before, I work in Richmond and San Pablo, and contaminated soil from this project allegedly ended up in Richmond in a neighborhood near a school. So if we're going to do anything with that money, maybe ought to be sending it to Richmond. And meanwhile, we have lots of concerns about what's happening here, what's happening with our early education, what's happening with our childcare, and what we're doing with our money. So I really ask you to deny this.
My name is Bill Reuter. I chair the Budget Advisory Committee for the City of Emeryville, and I'll start by saying I don't pretend to be able to follow the details of this discussion, but let me speak in a general way about the current financial fiscal state of the city. It's not the old days. We're post-redevelopment agency and development funding. The general fund is under more pressure than it has been in the past. And I can't follow the legal arguing here, arguments here, but if we're not compelled as a city to pay this money, and if Rich Robbins and Wareham are going to continue to survive in the future without $500,000, I suggest you think very carefully about making this grant, and remember that the general fund needs every half million that it can get its hands on.
Hi, Judy Timmel, also a member of Residents United. I urge you to deny this request. I certainly don't blame Wareham for making the request. It's certainly their right, as Charlie indicated, and it's your right to say yes or no, or maybe, or in between. This project will have a huge impact on not only the immediate neighborhood but all of Emeryville. It is quite huge, out of scale. Some of the residents that I have talked to living near there are horrified of what they have seen going up. Hence the name, impact fee. Yes, there's an impact and there's a fee, and the impact is not going to go away. They need to remediate it. They need to pay it. Emeryville is not in a position anymore where we can or should say yes to every developer requests. It's a fee that's warranted and needed, and we need it, and we need to say no, thank
Any other public comment on this issue? Okay, let's have some discussion. Diane.
I want to first thank all of the speakers today and make some clarifications as well. One is that this money would not be coming from the general fund. It's from, Charlie would have the exact name of the fund, but it's from traffic impact fees. And can you remind us how much is in that fund currently?
I believe it's about $5 million.
$5 million?
I didn't go through the fiscal impact analysis again, but you may recall that there, the current CIP has, I believe it's 12 projects to be funded by this fund, and with projected revenues over the next five years, in addition to the current fund balance, there is sufficient money to fund all the projects that are listed in the CIP.
And what's left over?
About a million left over, and then if you subtracted this, if you gave them $500,000, that would leave about $500,000 remaining in the fund.
I do support developer impact fees, and I do agree that there's an impact from this project, and if this had been transparent from the beginning to the developer, from the city, on everyone's behalf, I would support not applying this fee credit. However, with the complex history of this project, I do understand why the developers coming forward and asking for this, and I see reason with the report that staff prepared and the legality of the application. And I do have one question for Mr. City Attorney. Are we open to any exposure if we grant a complete denial, or if we don't grant?
No, you're not. The code is pretty clear that the council has discretion as to whether or not to grant the credit and the amount of credit, if any, to grant. So if you were to deny it, I think that's certainly well within the authority that's provided for you in your statute.
Okay, thank you. And even that being the case, I am leaning towards moving forward with the staff recommendation, personally.
I'd like to speak to the taxpayers, the people who came here to talk, as well as my fellow council members. I would really like to be convinced that we have like an absolute mandate to keep this money. I'd like to keep the money. I'd like to keep it in a transportation pot to use for transportation uses. That's a thing that I really want. Unfortunately, I'm kind of burdened with this thought that there was a credit written into our policy, and it is incumbent on us as good governmental actors to carry out the policies that were already written, to play by the rules that we wrote. And I spent a lot of time looking at this and looking at the staff report, and from what I can tell, they are very eligible for the credit. They did get a bonus, but they went above and beyond the things that they got the bonus for and did extra things. And so I'm tempted, at this point, to see that they do deserve some of the credit, at least the $208,000 that would take a project off of our list that they had built, that would have been built with the money from the fee that they paid. And that is my perspective, and I do very much understand the perspective shared by members of rule, the residents who came forth, and I hope to maybe get further clarity from my fellow council members on this, and I really appreciate everyone for coming and giving their input tonight, because I think this is a very difficult decision.
Mr. Mayor, may I go?
Yes.
So I have some comments. First, I just wanted to, I wanted to pose a thought back to something Councilmember Martinez said related to the general fund versus the transportation impact fee. The reality is that when we fund projects here in the city, they're never funded by a single source. So what you take from the transportation impact fee to pay for a project in the future must thenfore be paid by the general fund. So even though they are designated to different places, and this is, it's true that this is a transportation impact fee credit, the money that we would give back, the roads away money that would be used for future, non-currently listed capital improvement projects, which would then require us to take money from other funds in the city's coffers. So it's robbing Peter to pay Paul in the end, but in any event, the money gone is the money gone. On the legality issue, the council knows that I asked of staff to see the actual email exchanges from September of this past year, because, you know, it was curious to me how we got to where we were. And I just want to note, you know, that at that time in September of 2016, the planning director's advice to Wareham Development was that they were not eligible for the credit because they had been given bonuses before. Now, I understand that information changes and opinions change, and I want to really commend staff for doing very hard work to get us a recommendation, because I know this was not an easy task for you in many ways. So my hat's off to you for taking that task under direction in January and coming back to us with a recommendation. I do disagree with the recommendation, mostly because while I found that it is okay for the planning director under the regulations to use discretion in implementing the rules, it seemed to me, I don't want to go so far as to say an abusive discretion, but to me it seemed like misdirection to find that a ordinance passed after this project was approved, applied retroactively, and although it does contain this specific reference to a code section in the newly adopted zoning regulations, and therefore, any project before the adoption of those regulations would not have been approved or gotten a bonus subject to that, it seems crazy to not infer the intent of that the statute is to say that if you got a bonus for something that was, you know, that you already got a bonus for, if you got a bonus for, you can't get a credit. So to say, well, that they are eligible technically because the new statute doesn't apply, didn't apply at the time, but we're going to also allow them to use a new statute that didn't apply at the time, to me is taking two sides of two coins and using them to the advantage of the applicant in this case. So for me, I find that although it may technically be legal, this is a discretionary item to the points that were really well made, we have a lot of good things that we can and should do with this. I'm looking, I mean, you don't have to look farther than the front porch of this transit center to see that we are going to put a lot of cars on a bike boulevard that has no dedicated parking spaces on the street, red curbs that are violated by delivery vehicles all the time. Bike safety will be, if we think Powell and Christie is a problem, we're looking at Horton Street today without the cars on the road, but we don't have to be in the middle of a feasibility study or an analysis study to know what's going to happen there. And so having these fees, I think it was really well made point by Ms. McCamey, these fees will go right back to benefiting this project, is my hope, is that these fees will actually be used to improve bike safety on Horton Street and outside the developments that Wareham has, because Wareham is a major neighbor of ours in our community and actually a really good partner in our schools and our arts programs. But that being said, I think that this credit, although maybe legal, is not the right direction for us tonight, and so I'm going to move to deny it later.
I did not like this project when it first came up. However, I am somebody who recognizes that was then, this is now. What is now is we have a developer who worked at this site for about a decade trying to make it happen. This developer is willing to do long-term investments and suffer some consequences. We have to negotiate with this developer in the future for our benefit. I think that this developer is supplying some public amenities worth what he's asking for and has really taken it in a bad way for the cleanup costs. We have many other sites that this developer has development options on, and we're going to likely negotiate with this developer in the long run. And I think that, in the long run, it pays for a city to do basic fairness about when things change. You have to, you know, individual developers will do everything they can usually to earn a dollar, but as a city, we have to do basic fairness. We changed our point system. We went along, we raised fees dramatically during the time of this project. And I don't think it sends a good message to any future developer looking at our city to say, okay, this is a council who is going to change things, and if I get involved in a development in this city, who knows, next month, things could change, and, you know, they could be a little too cautious. And so I think- And so I think that while we definitely need the money, there's no doubt about that, it is a more prudent course for us to look at the fairness side of this, you know, the change over time. And I would vote for giving the $500,000 fee back because of this fairness issue. And truthfully, I think we don't need less developers in our town. We need more developers competing with each other to get better projects. And I think that's the message we need to send out to future developers is we need more of you, and we will play fair, no matter what, going forward, you know, even if things really change. So that's my feeling about it.
I appreciate that, Mayor Donahue. I think that's, you know, I think Wareham has been in town a long time. They're generally perceived as a good actor, and I've enjoyed my interactions with them and the things they've done for the town. I feel like we focus a lot of this argument on the remediation costs. And the remediation costs wouldn't have changed whether this fee were in place or not. There was a traffic impact fee of, what, 173, if I remember correctly, or 143?
Originally?
Yeah, originally.
195.
Oh, I wasn't even close. Okay. You know, and the four million of, if that were still the fee, the four million more would still have been there for the remediation. And so I just, I don't, I didn't like that as an argument of why we should refund this fee. I feel really the, you know, while things are budgeted for, it's based on projections, and I always worry about that, and I don't think we can have enough of a cushion, particularly when I know the transportation impacts will benefit this facility. You know, we should be gearing towards our transportation hub as where we're spending our transportation impact fees. So for that reason, I just cannot support this refund at this point.
I just want to add one thing in response to something you said, Mayor Donahue. Development is equals risk. And when you engage in development, you engage in risk. And I'm not here to say that what happened to Wareham through the timeline between the time this was approved and the time construction happened was fair or fortuitous even for their benefit. They encountered a number of obstacles, and I really do recognize that. But I think, I would just caution against the idea that developers won't come to the town if we don't give something back to them. The reality is that they do get a lot back from the city in a lot of different ways. And we are fortunate to have some very good developers who do some very good projects for the community, and I appreciate the sentiment of wanting to keep people who do that type of work here. I'm also sensitive to the way we are willing to interpret and apply things and how we balance the needs of corporations against the people who live here. And so if no one else has comments, I move to deny this.
I would like to actually comment a little bit further and clarify something. So I also did not look at any of the remediation costs when I was considering the fairness of returning the fee. I kept what I looked at really strictly to what transportation improvements they built. And for me, the sticking point was really the $208,000 for the Transit Center Plaza and Platform Extension, having that be in the list of things that would have been paid for with this fee and having that go above and beyond any other improvements that had bonuses in the past. And for me, that seems exactly what the credit was written for. So when you were writing about how the other regulation that said if you get a development bonus, you don't get that, had this intention, I think the credit was written with this intention to credit back for them building particular improvements that were on our list of things. And that's what I cannot get over, where they did essentially exactly what this credit was written for, why they should not be getting the credit. Do you not think that this was the intention of the credit?
I don't, in this case, because we're examining what's now a quantitative program versus what was a qualitative program, and the interim zoning regulations required that you used, you accomplished three out of 14 things on a list. And so I believe some of the things they had were like electric vehicle station and solar panels, things that we would now either standardize or require in some capacity or another today. And so if you are going to carry that argument over, you look at it and say the development should have some of those things. I know they're saying they did some things beyond this and that these things were listed in the, in the capital improvement plan as projects the city would otherwise spend money on, but at the same time, what I would acknowledge also is that the transit center itself in our regulations has its own definition. And although the base height for a project was 75 with a bonus of up to 100 feet for this zoning area, a transit center in that same core had a base of 100 feet and it had no limit, and they got 165-foot building. But with that, transit center required wider plazas and sidewalks, it required transit bus space, it required things in order to even qualify for the minimum height to be a transit center. And so yes, while it's true that the plaza may have been a $208,000 project that was in the CIP and separate from this, the reality still is that to be a transit center by definition, many of these things had to be there to begin with. And so they're kind of interwoven because it's not like you can simply carve out specific pieces of the project and say this is this or that. I realize we do that for some purposes in the CIP, but I still look at it as we gave them the benefit of having this extremely high exemption in the zoning area for height, provided they provided things that met the definition of a transit center. That's my comments. I still have a motion to deny on the table, but I'm open to listening.
And I'll second.
Is there an alternative motion?
Mayor, I would ask you call the question, please.
A different number?
I mean, I would be happy to do the 208,000 because I think that is very well accounted for within the staff report. And then everyone's unhappy, so.
Only if it makes everyone unhappy.
The goal.
Is that a substitute motion?
That's my substitute motion.
May I just clarify? Is the amount you're actually saying?
208, 420.
Right.
Yeah, that one.
I'll second that.
Rounded.
Yes.
Okay, we have two motions. How does it go?
The substitute motion gets voted upon first, and if it fails, then the original motion gets voted upon.
Okay.
Moved by Councilmember Martinez, excuse me, Medina, seconded by Councilmember Martinez for the substitute motion. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
No.
Vice Mayor Bowers?
No.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Okay, we're done with that, and we're on to 2.2, 12.2.
208. You failed. I'm not unhappy.
What?
You failed, I'm not unhappy.
Okay.
I'm not getting out of here by 10.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Lori Alafat, Management Analyst in the Human Research Department and the City's Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. For the past three and a half years, I and other staff members have been working on disaster preparedness efforts for the city. And one issue that we became aware of during this process was that the city's municipal code for emergency plans was very outdated. By background, the California Emergency Services Act provides the framework for the coordination and provision of emergency services at the state and local level. Specifically, Government Code Section 8610 of this act authorizes local governing bodies to establish a disaster council. The disaster council is responsible for managing the city's response to a local or state emergency. Our current emergency plan section of the Muni Code, we believe, was probably last adopted sometime in the 1970s. It predates our current form of council management, city manager government. It predates the standardized emergency management system, SEMS. It predates the National Incident Management System, NIMS, and the 200, obviously, the 215 edition of the California Emergency Services Act.
Oh, we're at the end already.
No. So why should we update the Muni Code? The Muni Code, the update of the Muni Code will establish the framework for emergency management within the city, and it will align us with nationwide standards. And it will also set the foundation and structure for the city's response during a disaster. It establishes the decision-making authority during an emergency response and recovery period and provides the city with authority to swear in volunteers under the state's disaster service workers volunteer program. So what are the changes that we're proposing? We're proposing that we change the name from the Civil Defense and Disaster Council, I mean, in this ordinance, from the Civil Defense and Disaster Council to the Disaster Council, which is the current terminology found in the state's Emergency Services Act. It also, the ordinance would establish the membership of the Emeryville Disaster Council, which would consist of the Director of Emergency Services, which is designated as the city manager, the Assistant Director of Emergency Services, which the city manager would have authority to appoint, the Emergency Services Coordinator, the Police Chief, and the City Attorney. It also identify, will identify the powers and duties of the Director of the Emergency Services. It allows the city, in the event of a declared disaster, to command the aid of as many citizens in the community as deemed necessary. It will also allow us to revamp our Community Emergency Response Team Program, the CERT Program. And it designates all appointed officials, employees of the city and Mesa, together with volunteers enrolled, to aid the city during an emergency to constitute the emergency organization of the city. There's no fiscal impact, the update of the ordinance. And so staff recommends that the city council take the following actions, that the ordinance be introduced by title only, that public comment be taken on the ordinance, and that the city council adopts the first reading of the ordinance. And that's the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Clarifying questions. Public comment?
Move to read by title.
I actually have one item, I'm sorry. I have one thing I would like to propose we change in the proposed ordinance. So I looked at the models of what other cities have, or I'm sorry, what counties and cities do with this, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to like scroll down and find it real quick here. In the disaster council, though, the, even on the right one, yeah. Uh, hold on, I'm so sorry. Okay, in Section 4-2.05, the disaster council creation and membership, the Director of Emergency Services is defined as the city manager, and in counties and cities, that's the case, that the county administrator, the city manager. But then the second position is the Assistant Director of Emergency Services, and our ordinance right now proposes that the director appoint that person. But in all the model ordinances I looked at, that's actually the lead elected person in the situation. And so I would propose that we amend B, or I'm sorry, not, so B is there, but in terms of, yeah, in 4-2.07B, where it says the offices of the Assistant Director of Emergency Services and Coordinator will be there, and it shall, the director will appoint them, I think instead we should propose, I would propose that it say that this person, that the mayor or another member of council as designated by the mayor shall serve as the Assistant Director of Emergency Services. Yeah, Carolyn?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. The Assistant usually serves as the director during the off shift. In other words, you usually have a shift A, daytime, say, shift B would be nighttime, and in those instances, this would need to be somebody on staff. Typically, it would be the Director of Public Works or perhaps the fire, the Police Chief, who would literally take over and direct operations during certain shifts and literally be directing staff. That training would have been ongoing, and the individual would be selected based on their training and their skills, their familiarity, their having participated in exercises and so on. Typically, the council members are not actually part of the EOC. They are typically the policy side. So in terms of declaring the emergency and things like that, so typically would not be included in training sessions, desktop, what's the other, the?
Table.
Table, well, the tabletop or any of the drills and so on. So that would be problematic. It would mean that the director would not probably be able to have relief.
That makes total sense to me.
I mean, I will go with what the majority says, but I'll just tell you, I looked at models, and that position has always been an elected person in every model I looked at, so.
I would just say that the reason why that would make sense to me, what your proposal makes sense to me is that in a city as small as ours and with a lot of staff who commute great, not necessarily, some small distances and some great distances, and in the, in the case of an emergency, cities and areas can be divided. So I lived in Los Angeles during the Northridge earthquake, and I was there not on the freeway, but when the 10 freeway collapsed. So there are instances when you're, this person who could be, potentially be an Assistant Director, might not be necessarily able to get to work at, you know, here, this is where work would be, in a normal fashion, whereas all five of us live here in town and can and should be expected to take on certain duties in the event of a disaster. I think those are special circumstances where we, our families and/or workplaces would allow us to, to take this on.
City Manager?
Sorry, actually, there's a pretty clear distinction between the elected policymakers and the trained staff. Typically, what will happen is you would go to the next level. So for example, if the Public Works Director was not available to serve as the Assistant, typically, there would be another alternate. I would say probably the Director of Community Development would be the next person in line. The other thing is that there's a general rule and understanding that, that you serve in the EOC where you are. If there's a disaster that hits and we have employees here from the city of Albany, that person is to report. If they cannot get to their own city, that city staff member is to report to the EOC here in Emeryville. So there is that kind of coverage and understanding. The other issue would be pertaining to liability and insurance and that kind of thing if you, if you have, and then we call upon the council members to make policy decisions and take policy directives. They're very distinct.
Could I make a suggestion? I think this is a first reading, and while I don't know that we can guarantee no emergencies between now and another meeting, would it be okay if we postpone this item, take a look at what other cities do, bring it back with more information, and then go from there?
Sure. Is that a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Pats, seconded by Councilmember Martinez to?
Continue.
To continue this item to a future meeting.
Yeah, continue, yeah.
With analysis on best practice.
With analysis on best practice. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowers?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we are on to 12.3.
Well, good evening, Mayor Donahue, members of council. Staff has an exciting...
Staff has an exciting new state program that we're bringing forward for your consideration. And let's get this slideshow going. So the California Cultural District's proposal.
Don't touch the little pad, it'll make it move.
So by way of background, in 2015, the state legislature passed Assembly Bill 189, and this was to create a new tool that would help cities and other entities support in the development and preservation of California's cultural assets. And since then, the Cal Arts Council has taken some time to really thoughtfully consider how to go about this, and they just recently, and when I say recently, I mean just after the turn of the year, have issued a call for letters of intent to apply for district So what does that mean? They're looking at a two-year pilot program. The state would begin with a small representative cohort of 10 to 15 cities by way of perspective. There's over 480 cities in California, so it is a very competitive process. The initial cohort invited would be able to shape the certification process and potential benefits. So even though it is a very competitive process, it's certainly worth Emeryville's, worthwhile, I should say, for Emeryville to apply. And toward that end, we did, just to see what our possibilities were, we worked with Townsend and Associates to create a phone conference meeting with Cal Arts staff, and just to say, hey, does Emeryville have a shot? We're a small city, and we want to know, should we take the staff time to make this effort? And they said absolutely. We are, have some different aspects to our community that they thought it would be worth our while to apply, and they wanted to see our application. Selection will represent a wide range of California cultural districts, and so that's one of the reasons they wanted to see our application. So what are the benefits? There are three primary entities that will help us out. One is the Art Council itself, has a cultural district, technical assistance. They will have artists that are very familiar with cultural districts, have helped run cultural districts, and can give us guidance, how to go about getting the best out of having a district designation. There would be public-private collaborations. Caltrans liaison services would have art and aesthetic infrastructure that they could offer to us, or would make it easier for us to do those installations. Street closure and access for events, and then highway signage that they would consider allowing us to put up to promote the district and the city's efforts. And then Visit California initiatives. So this is a big item, in that the state tourism board would also promote the city and its art district at state welcome centers, and they would include it in Visit California promotional efforts, press efforts, and also public industry events and presentations. This photo that's shown in the PowerPoint is an example of a spotlight that they did on San Diego. It wasn't for an art district, but just for San Diego as a city, and, and different business and tourism efforts there. But this would be specific to the art district, and how that would be a worthwhile place to visit. So by way of background, what they're looking at, I should say that this little map inset you see here is just kind of a tentative outline of where the district boundary would be, but that would be something we'll discuss later in tonight's conversation. So interested communities will be grouped by the following: a location, as urban, suburban, or rural. Well, because of our density and our general location in the metropolis, we would be considered urban. So that puts us in competition with Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco, Los Angeles, San Diego, so these very urban, large communities. That said, as I mentioned, in talking it over with the Arts Council, they said that the fact that Emeryville is so urban, it's really an urban village, is unusual, and that we have such a commitment to the arts really makes us stand out, so they really do want us to apply. And then this is district lifecycle to consider, whether it's emerging to established. Now, we've been doing arts programming, as you know, for decades. However, we still are working on our art center and more robust programs that some of our competition already has in place, so we really feel like we would suggest a midpoint for our lifecycle. And then the primary focus, you really only can have one designation. There's cultural consumption, production, and heritage. Cultural consumption is more what you think of a bohemian art district that has a long pedestrian corridor with many galleries for people to view. Cultural heritage would be more of, there's a certain ethnic group or historic aspect, maybe one of the mission cities, that sort of thing, that you would promote yourself as having that sort of district. And then cultural production, where you have a lot of artists working and living in the city, and certainly we have that here in Emeryville. We did suggest to the Arts Council, we were thinking of a cultural production approach, and they said that actually was another thing that might make us stand out in the applicant pool. Now, let's see. Quickly to go over the program process, partnerships are required. Because we have a quick turnaround time, staff has been very proactive and gone after a wide variety of partnerships that would reflect both small and larger entities, entities that are really homegrown, and those that have easily recognizable names. And those include requirement for cultural, nonprofit, or artist collective, it's the either-or. And Emeryville Celebration of the Arts has agreed to be our nonprofit member. Local business or business association, we have three, that's exciting, have agreed to be partners, that includes Wareham Development, Bullseye Glass Resource Center, and Pixar Animation Studios, and then a branch of local government, obviously, ourselves. And the majority of partners need to have offices or somehow be located within the defined district, and the city must adopt a resolution acknowledging their partners, which is what you're looking at tonight. So, I'm sorry, I went the wrong way. Three steps, and it's supposed to be a quick turnaround. The first step, the letter of intent. This phase, they require a submittal by March 29th. Cal Arts panel is going to review the letters of intent, and they will be inviting people to apply. So the most notable parties will be applying. We'll need to make ourselves stand out for that reason. The semifinalist phase will involve a visit of the panel to the city, and we already, because we have a quick turnaround time, are starting to consider where are areas or activities we can engage them in to get excited about our district. And that would be April and May that they're considering. And then the final phase, the panel would be reviewing cultural district assets. So we already are starting on that database review of not only existing artists and art centers, but also the specific activities of different cultural areas, and then also looking at businesses that are creative businesses. For example, a metal shop that also does really creative fabrication and design. So those are things that we need to really think outside of the box and include those. So immediate next steps include preparation of letter of intent. Because we need to make ourselves stand out, one of the things we want to do is, why would they pick up our letter out of 100 letters or so that they get and say, why is Emeryville, why would we look at this in greater detail? Well, we want to catch their eye. So one of the things we suggested doing was working with Earl Warren's Rotten City moniker, and, which also happens to be in our public art master plan about, you know, rotten city to fertile ground for our production. And include that message, just to catch their eye. And then we do need letters of support, three are required. I believe we have those three, but we're actively going after several more. It doesn't hurt to have a wide variety in there. We also are preparing district maps. They require one map, which basically is supposed to have a suggested outline for a district boundary. It's supposed to be a walkable area, and have the concentration of the assets in the district. Now, I'm going to show you a couple maps that we've already prepared. In addition to just the base map, we are already starting some data collection to additional maps. And the outline that you'll see is just a potential outline of a boundary. We actually would like to have council's input on a specific boundary. This is the base map that would be going with the letter of intent. It shows the suggested outline based on their requirement that the district be a walkable district. Well, as a practical matter, the city's 1.2 miles, so you could walk the whole city. But typically, if you look at a pedestrian or bicycle plan, it would call for a quarter mile to half a mile for a walkable distance. And so we were thinking of the Hollis Corridor, Park Avenue area, and then looping in, including Big Daddy's Garden and ECCL for the Artists and Schools Program, to make sure that we could give them a wide range of activities to view and participate in. That said, other boundaries that we'd like council's input on would be potentially having the boundary be coterminous with either the preferred development area, that would be, I think, ABAGs.
Yeah.
Priority development area, I'm sorry.
PDA.
That would, associated with transit-oriented development, correct?
Right, that's basically the entire city, except the area west of the freeway and the area east of San Pablo Avenue.
And the other alternative, falling upon the whole city of art concept, is just to include the whole city. It's 1.2 miles. I mean, you can walk the whole city. So it would be walkable. One of the reasons why we are thinking of not including the whole city was maybe to avoid the large retail centers, as they're not as artistic in nature, or they have artistic aspects, but to concentrate on that corridor. That said, we could take either approach, or one of those approaches, or another that council would suggest. So we, speaking of mapping, we do have those other maps, at least potentially. Again, the graphics and the boundary will be updated as needed. Now, this map shows art production sites and cultural institutions. Now, something exciting that we had the interns do, well, maybe it wasn't too exciting for them, because it involved coming through about 3,000 business licenses, but to identify creative businesses and art-related businesses. And so this map, in yellow, and I think we need dark blue or something easier to read, shows all the creative businesses or art production facilities and cultural institutions in the city. And so as you can see, there's a concentration in the current suggestion for the boundary, but it's throughout the entire city where we have these production facilities. And then the third map that we are going to prepare, or started preparing, is a map that shows all our public art installations, as you can see, not only in the immediate suggestion for a boundary, but throughout the entire city. And the larger the circle essentially that you see, the greater the amount of installations in that area. It would be hard at the scale of the map to really show, I think it's 300-plus, public art installations that we have, which is just incredible for a city of this size. And that's one of the data analyses I'm hoping to do before we, if we get invited to apply, is to do some kind of quick, back-of-the-envelope, apples-to-apples analysis of really per capita, how much does Emeryville spend on public art versus our urban neighbors or other urban competitors? And so this would be about, I think would be super helpful in getting attention. And so at this point, we're just recommending that the council receive the state district, approve a resolution authorizing the city to receive a state art district designation. We acknowledge the four partners mentioned previously. And then we did have a request from Emeryville Celebration of the Arts to do some minor modifications to the description of their nonprofit, and we have that language, if you could direct staff to make those modifications. And that concludes staff's comments. If you have any questions about any of these slides, or any comments, especially about the district boundary, that'd be great to hear at this point.
Okay, clarifying questions? Members of the public.
Well, I stuck around tonight, because I'm really excited that the city has decided to bring this before you, to, you know, pursue this designation. But, so I actually have, with two hats on, as the coordinator for the Celebration of the Arts, we're really honored to partner with the city, and with Pixar, and Bullseye, and Wareham Development in this application, but also as the community liaison for the 45th Street Artists Cooperative. I brought this item to our co-op board last week at our semi-annual community meeting, and our board is fully behind support of this application, and will be writing a letter of support to accompany this. So just thank you for your consideration tonight. And I wanted to say personally, actually, that one of the things I've always loved about Emeryville are all of the creative businesses that are here, and I think there are a lot more than most of us realize. I mean, I know that, I sort of discovered that when we do the studio visits, because the exhibition is open to people who live or work in Emeryville. And sometimes, I'll be at a new address and whatever, and it's just, you know, sort of like, oh my gosh, that's what's going on behind this door? I mean, it's, it's really very exciting, and so I really am looking forward to if we should make it to the next level, what, what that visit might be like, really providing a very sort of rich view into the city of Emeryville. And then beyond that, putting together a list of cultural assets in the city, which I think would really be valuable to the city in other ways as well. So, thank you.
Discussion.
I just hope that the application includes mention that our mayor is an artist.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I think it's a good year to move forward with this.
Yes, that, we will be sure of that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I have to say, this is a fantastic presentation. The maps are amazing. I did not realize the density we had in some of these areas. Really excited that we're going to be applying for this.
Emmy, I know you and Chad, we've, we had the chance with Sharon to speak about this previously on a different occasion, and I know you guys have put a ton of work in a short period of time into doing this, and so thank you for that, for being here so late to talk about it still. I appreciate that.
I would actually support making the whole city the district.
If, are we asked to do that tonight?
You know what, actually, I would like that tonight, if possible, because I'll tell you what, we, as part of the application, are going to want at least to give this slide, this map, to them. They want an outline of the proposed district, so that would be good to have a specific direction on that. That, what they're looking for is something that is walkable and has a concentration of the assets in the city. And so that, that's kind of the defining criteria. And so you can balance that out with, hey, the whole city really, it's a city of art, it's the whole city. We could start with that.
Well, can I ask you a question about that, based on, I mean, the, the suggestion that was made, to make it the whole city? Sometimes, and I appreciate the reason why you want to do it totally, but I just want to hear from you, for district purposes, is, I mean, districts are generally sub-areas of cities, and so I just wanted to just confirm that we don't look like we don't know what we're doing if we say the whole city? Because generally, districts for special types of designations are subdivisions of cities. I just want to check with you, if that's, if your understanding can be, we can do the whole city, and as long as we can sell it, that's fine, or if you think, and I might be interested in hearing also from Sharon if the mayor will entertain that, but just to see whether that's the most prudent way to put the application for, I just want to hear your opinion.
Given this particular quick analysis that we've done, it looks like there's assets across the city. The...
Is it a walkable district, though?
But the, you know, like I said, walkable in theory, 1.2 miles, if you're in good shape, no problem. But most people my age would prefer to have it be a quarter mile to half a mile. And so I'm thinking it would be good to possibly have it more defined. Now, you could make, it depends what message the council wants to get, that, that you could make the argument, our entire city fits into the size of the district of another city, so we really are a city of art. Or you could say, you know what, this is the concentration, we know we have the strongest argument based on data, and that was one of the things I mentioned in my staff report, we need a fact-based, data-driven narrative and support to give the state in going after this designation. And so it would, might be more specific to an area like this, as shown.
I am actually inclined to go with a slightly smaller area, because I do think it has a really high density, which was specified. a really high density, which was specified, and I also think that it's not walkable through all of the city to connect through to the peninsula necessarily.
I was going to say, I think everything to the east of the train track, because we exclude the mall areas, the areas that we always talk about need bike and pedestrian improvements, areas that can't be reached as easily. So if it's, the walkability component is a major piece of it, I just have a harder time. I really am sensitive to what Councilmember Martinez is saying.
I'm just thinking about Shoreline Park, I'm thinking about the former site of the art at the Emeryville Mudflats.
I'm open to doing it either way personally. I would like to hear what Sharon has to say, if that's okay with the mayor.
Yes, that is, okay.
As an aside, when we, Sharon and I, and you could speak to this, we were just having, because we have a quick turnaround time, we've already initially started talking about, we need to talk about site visit and what that's going to involve. So one of the things we could do, just thinking creatively, is that we could say that this is the district, but then have a, you know, barbecue at the marina during those site visits, so they get to see the marina and some of the really neat art installations out there, but we're meeting the criteria of the application process.
Can you go to the other map real quick? The one that shows where the public art was? Okay. Thanks.
I actually think it's stronger to go with the defined district, because on all of these maps, you do see, if you're looking at the legend, you see that things expand beyond that. It's not that we don't have, especially if you look at the public art map, I mean, but there's a concentration in this area. And so, I mean, personally, I think, you know, while the narrative might say, well, we consider our, we're so small, we consider our whole city to be cultural district, I think this is a much stronger argument.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm inclined to go with a zone as well. I feel it is more walkable, and I think it does exactly that. I think we're an art city, and this is our, what do you call it, the cultural district. So.
So if I could just clarify, this map is obviously quite schematic. I don't know how precise these boundaries need to be, but it could be, as Councilmember Bowders suggests, the railroad track on the west, the city boundaries on the north and south, and east, and then San Pablo Avenue.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, can you go to the slide that has all the things we have to do?
Can I make a request?
Of course, go ahead.
Can we have the person to your right make the motion?
Absolutely, that's fine.
Well, Expression College is training people in the digital arts every day, and they're on the west side of the track, and I mean, that is, I don't know, just slightly out of the district that's been proposed, but, you know, close enough. That's a pretty big player from a...
I think it's about the installations and the concentration. Am I correct on that or not? I mean...
May I speak to that, actually?
Yeah, absolutely.
Actually, I think that one of the things that we did want to do was include Expression College. So it really is schematic, and that there may be a slight alteration to the district line, because that would be a great site visit. There's also the Animation Collective, I don't know if you're aware of them, they're here on Hollis, that work with a lot of Pixar employees to teach animation and those related skill sets. And so it would be good maybe to have some of those schools that are not only local schools, but are national schools involved. So that would be, you know, just like ECCL, slightly off the path, we definitely want to include that.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the entire concept, and we go with a district approach, and we let the staff work the details of how to do that district map.
Okay, and so with that, Mayor, would your motion include the motion to, at ECA's request, to revise the description of the nonprofit as asked in number three?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that motion. And acknowledge the four partners in the city, I think that's included, okay?
Okay, motion by Mayor Donahue, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowders, to use the district approach and have staff discretion on describing that border and to make the changes that were requested. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess that means that we are going on to 12.41.
Sherry Hartz, your city clerk, and what is before you tonight is an item regarding your, this computer is acting odd tonight. I'm going to stand back here, to discuss topics related to your city council committees and community advisory committees. You all received a staff report, and we can basically break it down to the two resolutions you're being asked to approve, one of which is simply to amend our local roster that contains all of our detailed information about how our committees meet. We've had several requests for slight changes in meeting times, that kind of thing. So that's the first resolution, and you saw that all detailed in your staff report. The second resolution has to do with making amendments to the rules of procedure. You recently went through this exercise with your council rules of procedure. This is for your committees, and it came to our attention that there was one for city council committees, but there was never really a specific set of rules for community advisory committees, the same ones were kind of being used interchangeably and weren't specific. So we've cleaned up those errors, made a combination document for both types of bodies, and you received a red-line version in your packet about the changes that we were proposing. In going through those in great detail to make those revisions, I noticed, as a somewhat new clerk in the city here, that there were things contained in those rules that we weren't doing. And so I thought, well, let's have council look at those and say, yes, we definitely should be doing this, or no, this is something we can drop. So there are some items that are on this slide that, actually, on the next slide, that have to do with items that are in the rules that we're not doing. On this slide, we have sort of a summary of feedback that I received in going to all the meetings over the last several weeks. I've attended one each of all of the meetings of all of our bodies, and you all saw me at your various city council committees. The only exception to that was the Housing Committee, who ended up canceling their meeting for lack of any business but me, and I guess I didn't qualify for them to convene. We did solicit their written comments, and I included in the detailed spreadsheet the comments, but I do want to give the disclaimer that only one person responded. So the comments for the Housing Committee only represent the views of one member.
May I ask which member?
I don't remember his name at this point, and since I didn't go to the committee, I don't have faces.
Ed Troyding, Frank Jordan, Tito Young, Buzz Curdoza, those are the men, and...
Say the first one.
Ed Troyding.
I think it might have been that one. And I did leave it open in case, I asked the staff liaison to send out a reminder, and I did leave it open that if I received it even up till tonight, I would read it into the record or talk, but I didn't receive other responses. So, that being said, there were some questions that came up that I would like you, and I don't want to talk too much, because this is more about you talking. These are four items that I'd like you all to weigh in on, that I would then come back on April 18th with a follow-up item to, once I get direction in the way council wants to go, I can come back with an item for your approval on April 18th. So, A, appoint an ex officio council member liaison to each community advisory committee, and if you decide to do that, should it be for all the committees or only if requested? Now, on this point, there was a question, you saw the questions in your pocket, about how satisfied they were with their communication with council. And many of the committees volunteered without me even raising it, that they used to have a liaison, that they liked having that. And about two years ago, in 2015, there was kind of a restructuring, and that city council liaison was removed. And so some of the members that were members then and are still members would like to see the return of that, while they understand that the council members are very busy and have a lot of obligations, if they were willing to devote some time and split up those assignments. Many of them would like to have that returned. Their idea of this liaison is not so much that that council member would be sitting there and sort of guiding them or leading them or giving them priorities. What they're looking for is a conduit back to the larger council, somebody to carry the water back to the council and be a resource for them for issues that they, because again, they feel like there's this lack of communication back and forth between, and they want to feel like, you know, they show up at these meetings, they put their time in, and they do their work, they want to feel that there's an outcome or result of that, that that information is getting back to council. So that was what the first one is about. And the second part of that question is only because one committee did say they would not be interested in having a liaison. So your decision would be, are we going to sort of mandate that everybody has one, or can it be on a case-by-case basis? So...
Didn't it want a liaison?
Parks.
Oh, okay.
And actually, I should mention, and I did have a paragraph in the staff report, but I should call out the fact that when I met with them, it was fairly late in the game, they were one of the later ones I met with, and they were contemplating a number of different changes. And I felt like, in the 15 minutes they allotted me on their agenda, that it was too much, the scope of what they wanted to do was too much for me to just say, okay, fine. So what I recommended to them, and I hope they take me up on it, is that they set a special meeting just to talk about the recomposition. They're talking about, you know, moving their start time, changing their frequency, changing the makeup, you know, they have a lot of special designations, which makes it very hard for them to maintain membership. And so the people that do go are good, so they're not ending up too frequently having to cancel their meetings for lack of quorum, but that has happened recently, and there was a big issue they would have liked to have weighed in on that they weren't able to because they didn't have a quorum. So they're looking at a lot of changes that I felt they should devote more time to talking to, to make sure they didn't have any unintended consequences, which, as we just talked through a couple of the things briefly, I would say to them, well, what about this, and what about that? And so, anyway, those changes would come back to you as well. So I don't know if you would like me to go through all my items, or do you want to talk about each one individually?
How about we go through them individually? Hey, A.
Oh. I mean, I guess only if they want it.
I know the Economic Development Committee asked for this during the campaign. At one of our forums, it came up as a, they felt that their voice was less heard because they didn't have a council member.
Yeah, that aligns with what I heard from them when I visited.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, I think what Member Medina just said is if they want one, I think it's something we could look into.
I made a little chart, because I had a couple of general suggestions at the end. I had talked to Sherry before this meeting, but one of the things I had on here was liaison, and so excluding the Planning Commission, which is its own body, the seven committees that are there, Parks did not want one, and Housing didn't answer the question, actually, really. So that left five committees, and if we each took one of the five committees, we would each be liaison to one committee. That's in terms of whether we do all of them or the ones that have asked, there's five that have asked, and so they were BPAC, Budget, Aging, EDAC, and Public Art. And so...
And we don't have to decide who gets what tonight?
Right, but just as something to think about, that there were five, so we wouldn't be like doing two or three or anything like that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that, yes, you'd like to resurrect that practice, and yes...
Wait, we haven't really, this was a suggestion.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
I'm fine. I'm fine with resurrecting that for those committees that have asked.
I would just make it, the difference in the past was that the council member was a member of the committee itself, and I would just make it clear that when we change this, it's, they're not a committee member.
Correct. I put ex officio, that sort of means the same thing as non-voting.
Okay.
Yeah, but they can speak at the meetings.
Yes, and in fact, any of you could go to any of their meetings, as I'm sure you're aware, anytime you wanted to. This is just formalizing it a little step.
Okay. I support what Councilmember Medina has asked, or suggested, yeah.
I think if they want it, we can, if we have the availability to do so.
Yeah, I think that, well, Mr. Pats might have real-time limitations more, well, I guess you're pretty limited, too. I mean, all of us, it's a chuggle.
This is what I signed up for, so, I think, yeah, if I have one more committee, that's fine. I don't love the idea, but I think that's the best way to get the voice of the community out there, so I've got to support it.
Yeah, if people are volunteering their time.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're getting a lot of positives here.
Okay, great, then I'll say that's a 5-0 to that, and that you're going to say that it doesn't have to be universal, that it can be on request. Okay. All right, on the next one, when I went to visit the Public Safety Committee, both Vice Mayor Bowders and Councilmember Pats brought up the idea that they would like to be involved in emergency preparedness. Then, coincidentally, when I was at the Sustainability Committee meeting, Laurie Elefant, who spoke earlier tonight, was there to speak about sustainability, be involved in emergency preparedness. And so since I had the knowledge that you all had wanted to be involved, too, I thought we could, since you're all going to be here discussing this, you could talk about it tonight. Laurie's thought was that there could be a role for both, wherein Public Safety is involved in the preparedness aspect and perhaps education, and then sustainability, she feels it's appropriate to be thinking about business resumption, you know, continuation of business after an emergency or disaster. That's a whole field of study where you work on your plan to resume business as facilities come back online, as staff comes back to staffing. That was just her idea, but it's for you all to talk about and decide.
It feels like a real stretch for our committee, for sustainability, frankly.
Business resumption? Well, I mean, it's, they need a forum.
Economic Development?
You think so?
I don't know, I just, sustainability, in anything we talk about, that doesn't seem particularly related to our subject matters.
I don't feel like we have enough information, frankly.
Just for context, for your benefit, what we had proposed, Christian and I at the meeting, was that we thought, one or two meetings in the year, we would have either a presentation from Cal OES, FEMA, the Red Cross, just groups to come in and give us information so that we can be updated on what the city is actively doing and provide input back to the council on whether we're adequately prepared annually. So that was the scope of what, I don't know if you were thinking differently?
Well, did Laurie indicate any activity that we would be undergoing in sustainability? I was there at the meeting, I remember it coming up, but I guess without her at this meeting, we're flying blind a little bit.
I know, and I was going to try to catch her and ask her, but I felt bad asking her to stay when she'd already stayed so long. I think one of the things that came up was wondering whether the Public Safety Committee already had so much on its plate, and you all are the members of that, so you would know more than myself. If you didn't need another assignment, it's fine if one or the other of you take it. You don't want anyone's feelings to be hurt, you know?
So I think it makes more sense in Public Safety, but I don't think it precludes sustainability from having a conversation about it. I think that, you know, the more people involved in emergency preparedness, the better. And so if, you know, whoever comes and talks to us, you know, wants to come and talk to sustainability, to talk about businesses and things, I'm okay with that, but I think the idea of the planning should come to Public Safety, because that's where Chief DeHaut is, and Chief, Fire Chief, and Winnaker. Winnaker, thank you. He's not here, so I can't have that visual. So I just think that it makes more sense, but I don't think there's anything precluding sustainability from addressing things that are relevant to them.
That seems fine.
And if Laurie thinks that it's relevant to sustainability, I would defer to her judgment.
Has Laurie made a visit to Public Safety yet? Perhaps it'd be prudent to have her get on one of your agendas to talk about this topic as well, since she...
Sure, yeah, no, I'm happy to have it on the agenda.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right.
So we just agreed to, everyone's okay with emergency preparedness being in Public Safety?
Yeah, it seems like Public Safety could spread the word. I know our community tries to think about how we're going to survive the big shake, and we have provisional plans, and we just need to integrate with the city and know some of what's happening in the city and have that intersect with our community. And I think that Public Safety being involved as a committee will help the rest of our community understand how our city is going to function in an emergency. So I think it's a good idea.
This next question arose out of something that spontaneously kept to being mentioned without... without me asking, which is regarding the work plan. Again, when the restructure happened a couple of years ago, all the committees were sort of mandated to do a two-year work plan that was in conjunction with the two-year budget cycle. And many of the members felt that this was make-work, and that it didn't really help them in the long run, that they spent a lot of time talking about this work plan that they felt would better have been spent reacting to issues that had bubbled up, or things that they would like to respond to for council. They just didn't see the value of the time they spend in the work plan. However, to follow up on this need or this desire for more communication with council, I actually suggested the idea, something I've been thinking about for a long time, is that rather than their annual reports, which by the way, not everybody does, and they're supposed to, but, rather than having those go on a consent agenda, and I know you all read your packets, but there's no sort of recognition at the meeting, why not have them, and have the chair and as many members as are available, come to the meeting, have a time allotted on the agenda, and actually present their accomplishments in an annual report to you? And somebody said, "Well, what are you going to have, all eight of them? Come one night, you'll be there forever." And I thought, "Well, we could split them up, or we could have a special meeting devoted just for that, and make it fun, and have them get some recognition, some face time with you guys to talk about their accomplishments." And people seem to be generally good with that idea, other than their fear of public speaking, so I assured everybody that you can decide who talks, it can be the person who's not afraid to speak. So wanted to run this idea by the council and see what you've thought about that. About, and it's two parts. Can we not make them do a work plan, but can we let them come and talk about their accomplishments?
Yes.
So this is one I really strongly support, and I actually would like to link this to something I want to ask later, related to the staggering of positions and a couple of other things. But I think that people are investing their time for us, and we should encourage them to share with not just us in a report, but us here and the community about what they're doing. And so I like the idea of having a series of meetings, or, you know, if council felt it was more appropriate, a special meeting where everyone could be here together, but a series of meetings where two of them come out on an agenda at a time, perhaps, between April and June, before we're going to make our next set of appointments, before we're going to do all the things that we do with the calendar cycle, so that we can, that's kind of the year-end for them, and it gives us a chance, at the same time we formulate the budget, to hear about all the things they're doing, and what they would like to see us do, so that those things are right on the top of the page for us when we're sitting there making decisions about what we need in the city. We have the committees coming in at the same time and saying, "This is what needs to be done." So I strongly endorse this.
So that would be then, just prior to maybe the annual council goal-setting, so that you...
Springtime, somewhere in that, I mean, whatever time would be, fits into your calendar, but I think that it should be, come in after, or with goal-setting, but right before we do budget, so that all that information is being presented back to us by the residents. That's what makes their time valuable, I feel like.
I totally agree, but with the stipulation that we set a time limit on these presentations.
We can work on that, for sure.
We already have very long meetings.
Yeah.
That's why I thought the idea of a special meeting might be nice, although it drags you in for an additional meeting.
It could be a dinner event, we could have a reception and a thank you event for them with it.
Yeah, make it social. Many cities do have social events for their boards and commissions.
I think that's great, they deserve that.
So maybe we have a cake and a coffee.
An appreciation event, where they do, it's very less formal, maybe.
Yep.
Could we have veggie tray, not cake?
No cake!
I'll take cake, don't worry.
Team pie.
All right, so, sounds good on that. And then, every single dinglebody that I met with all said they have very light, public light, if any, public attendance, unless there is some unusual hot item that people will come to speak about. And so I thought council might have some ideas. We have been trying to use social media more, we've been pushing things out on Newsflash on our website, and trying to get the word out about things. I think we could be using Twitter more and Facebook to get information out, but I thought the council might have some ideas, too, about encouraging public attendance at the meetings, and promoting interest in their activities.
Do you use Nextdoor?
No.
I don't think the city does. Seventy-five notifications a day about things.
Aren't those set up within neighborhoods by the neighbors? I don't think cities are involved in those.
We could ask the people on the committees to set up accounts.
To participate, yeah.
To push that out in that way, because that, I mean, I get so many local updates about who's selling a rug.
Several per day.
There is a way to disable it, finally, but I did. But, I mean, man, that's an effective way of getting out things in a hyper-local fashion. I would suggest to the committees that they utilize Nextdoor.
My idea's not cheap, so...
What's your idea?
I actually think, and this goes to a different thing, I've thought we needed a public information officer for a while, and to have a page on the website that really is dedicated to putting out, like actively, like this is what's happening in the city, something that people can click on, and that really requires a financial investment that I don't think we can make right now, but I really think a PIO who manages a website. I was trolling other city websites to see which ones were really good, and I've made a small list of really good city websites that have high civic participation related to the use of their webpage on committees, and so, for a separate discussion, but I don't know that, I would encourage us to make that decision right now, so.
It's good feedback.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, were there any other input on this item D about encouraging public attendance?
I'll put some thought into it. Honestly, the number one way to get people to show up to meetings is to go door-to-door, and I don't know if the committees have the time for that.
Yes, and I mean, they don't seem to be missing, it's not like they're sitting there saying, "Why doesn't the public come to our meetings?" I mean, they're fine, they're doing their business, but if part of what we're trying to do is get a lot of community outreach, you know, it would be useful and interesting for people if they wanted to attend those meetings. Okay, we already talked about, oh, did people have comments about the redlined rules of procedure? If you had a chance to look through and note the changes that we are suggesting, were they acceptable? Were there additional things that we missed?
They all seemed reasonable to me.
Me, too.
Yeah, no changes.
Good, okay, that's easy. I got you guys when you're tired.
So there was a second slide, or no?
There is a second slide to talk about. Okay, so we already touched on work plans and annual reports. These last three do have to do with things that I mentioned before, that I admitted to you are in the rules that are not being done. The first one, establishing a quorum and enforcing attendance provisions. So we do have attendance provisions in the rules, and what they state is that you can have, as a committee member, you can have no more than three unexcused absences in a calendar year. The problem with that is, what if you have a member who always gets excused? There's nothing in there, there's no mechanism to say, "We need you to come to a meeting." So, and the problem, of course, is that chronically absent members who don't get removed from the committee can create quorum issues if that continues. So currently, if somebody has unexcused absences, it's automatic that the staff liaison to the committee can write them a letter and say, "You're off the committee due to unexcused absences." And that's all well and good, but again, we have the issue of the ongoing excused absences. So it's up to the council whether you want to establish some kind of different provision so that we have a mechanism to deal with that. One of the things that I had suggested, and just in trying to think through how it would work well, because we have committees that meet monthly, every other month, and quarterly. The quarterly ones, I'm not too concerned about, there's only two of those, those are both the budget-related ones, and they meet at the behest kind of of when finance needs to hear from them. So we'll set aside the quarterly ones, then you've got your monthly and your every other monthly. If you decided on a percentage of total meetings in their year, that they could not miss more, whether it's excused or unexcused, that would be a way to go. So let's say you said thirty, you can't miss more than 33% of the meetings, or 50%, whatever percentage you decided on, then that wouldn't matter, like I said, if it was excused or unexcused. For somebody to miss that much of the business of the meeting maybe means that they don't have the time to commit to that group, and they should be removed. But again, that would be a council's discretion. So thoughts on that?
I thought 25% when you first were doing it.
Okay, so if we think about it, if you're meeting...
Yeah, well, go ahead. I was going to say, the issue is if you only meet six times a year, 25% is one meeting, because 33% is two meetings, so you don't ever get to, so it's like, I would propose 33%, just so that there's two meetings.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
That's fine.
Okay, everybody agree that 33%? And, okay, then that removes the need for my second question, because one thing also, people are asking to be excused from meetings, but they might call the chair 20 minutes before the meeting. Well, by that time, many people are already on their way to the meeting, or might be sitting at the meeting, and won't find out until they've already been there that there's no quorum. So I was going to suggest a 24-hour notice in advance, and we can still certainly do that, because if a person knows they're going to be absent, I think that 24 hours, or some number of hours before the meeting, is an acceptable amount to expect in terms of notice.
It's reasonable.
24 hours is fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, staggering term expiration. I think, again, a couple of years ago, going back to the last restructuring, an unintended consequence of that was that somehow everybody ended up with the same term expiration. And so when you look down your roster of folks, everybody's term expires on June 30th of 2017, with very few exceptions, Planning Commission being one, they're all on top of it. So a situation could arise where all of the incumbents decide they don't want to reapply, you can't get enough people to fill the spots, or you'd end up with all newbies on there, which is not a good system. So it's always best practice to stagger, so that half plus one has one term expiration, and the other half has the other. To accomplish that, we just need to, one time, appoint some people to a little bit longer terms. So if you agree in concept that that's a good idea to do, then it's just a matter of determining the method by which we assign those, some people get a two-year assignment, and some people get three, then the next time we do it, everybody's back to two years. We just, it's similar to when we changed council.
So can I ask two questions on that?
Yes.
Why can't we do one in two years for the first year? As opposed to two and three? I'm hesitant to give people three-year appointments, because I feel like we end up reappointing people in any way, and also, we might want to review it more frequently than three. I mean, for me, two-year terms for a committee is like the right amount of time, personally, but, so I just, is there a reason why you're saying two and three versus...
Just because that's what I thought of. So I'm open to suggestions.
Okay, and then I guess my suggestion on who would get the one-year term versus the two-year term, which was your other question, from my point of view, the people who have served the longest on the committee would be the people who would fall into the one-year category, and the people who are newest, just because we want to encourage new people to be on the committee, right, and stay on it. I don't want them to think, "Oh, I have to come back," like seniors get to stay. Just have the people who've been on longest reapply after their first year to get a two-year position, but people who would be up this June 30th, or whatever, would get a two-year position if they were in the least tenured part, so that they, they're encouraged to remain part of the committee. I mean, that's just kind of how I was thinking about it, at least.
Okay, I will say that in discussions with the committees, I think the feeling was actually the opposite.
I'm sure it was, oh, yeah.
That the senior people would think that, out of deference for their longstanding service, that they would get the longer term, so that's just another perspective.
They all have one-year terms right now, is the way I look at it, so.
Right.
But I'm fine doing whatever people want, so, just trying to move along.
I think we want to give some stability to the newer, coming-on members, and really say, "We want you to commit and be here for two years," particularly if we're going to have the, you know, you can't miss a meeting, and then all of a sudden, you're up for appointment again, whereas the long-terming people have shown us their commitment, so.
Are people with the idea of the one and two versus the two and three, in terms of years?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, and in the event that everybody who's an incumbent on a committee all re-ups, and they all get appointed, so I don't have a newbie, is there a fallback, like drawing lots, or how would you like to decide on the terms in the event that nobody's new?
So I'm going to go with how they finish in the triathlon.
I'll second that.
No, drawing lots is good.
Yeah.
Okay, and I see people started to gather their stuff, so I'm going to hurry up. The last thing I think you'll find no objection to, we have it in the rules, that the city clerk's office would supply training every July to all of the new appointees and any existing appointees that wish to join in, and so I'd like to reestablish that practice by starting this year with a training and orientation kind of a session. For those who come in mid-year for unexpected vacancies, they would continue, as we do now, to meet with their staff liaison to get up to speed, and then would just attend the next July training when it came around.
Okay. Did you do something like that for the Parks Committee?
Did I?
Yeah.
I did not, but maybe someone a lot like me did.
Okay, I just, there was a...
Nancy might have, Nancy Lima.
Okay, it just got a positive review, so I was going to take you...
Oh, it was me, it was totally me.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, you did a great job with that, so.
Thank you.
I'm all for it, so.
I had one other item, that finishes your list.
That's all I was coming to find out.
So I just had one other item, and I know that you are going to go back to the Parks Committee with some stuff. That's a committee that spurned my initial conversation with staff, there's just been so many challenges for that committee, and so I just would ask that, as you craft stuff with all the guidance you got tonight, I know you're going to wait to get some more information from them, I would like to ask if council is supportive tonight that we recognize a complaint that comes from the Parks and Rec Committee regularly, and we tonight give staff direction to reduce that committee from nine to seven, so that they don't have quorum issues. It removes the two vacancies they've had for a long time, which includes the youth position that's never been filled, and they have a really hard time conducting meetings in this situation, and multiple committee members have called me about it, and so if everyone's okay, I'd like to give staff the ability to move it down to seven now.
Oh, I agree wholeheartedly.
So we're going on that committee, we had two meetings canceled before I had a meeting, so absolutely, I think it's very necessary. Yes.
And then the only other thing, Sheri, is if you, when you come back with, if you could bring us the designated, there's a couple of committees that have all kinds of designated spots, like Parks and Rec, and they can't find people for those things. So if the committees could just tell us, like, is there a way to loosen that up and make it a little more at-large? I think that'd be helpful guidance before we kind of do anything else.
Yeah, maybe they can get three people out of these five designations.
Right, yeah.
Right, and we did talk about that a little bit, and many that have seven members, let's say, and five are at-large, and two are business representatives, they want to keep that, and many of the committees talked about wanting to keep that business representation.
Of course, yeah.
But for all these other little special ones, it is challenging to fill, and it seems like most of the school district appointments, for whatever reason, they have very poor luck getting attendance of those members.
Okay, I'll move the resolution for amending the schedules, as it's on here, 12.4.1.
Seconded.
While she runs over.
Run, Sheri, run!
Run!
Any skipped public comment this evening is because the public has all gone home. Just to throw that out there.
Been no public here for the last two issues.
Can you run those motions and seconds by me?
I just, I made a motion for item 12.4.1, the first of the two resolutions, to approve the meeting schedule change.
I seconded it.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bouders, seconded by Councilmember Medina, Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bouders.
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
Okay, 12.4.2.
I'll move 12.4.2's resolution.
I thought you did both.
I just did one, because I think they have to be done separately, she required.
I'll second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bouders, seconded by Councilmember Pats, Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bouders.
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye.